Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May 11, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at Gloucester High School. Consisting with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap and press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I will call the meeting to order and remind everyone that the mission for Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engaged like long learners. I actually have to drum you into some.
I pray that we can.
Just to drive life of the United States of America into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we now move on to oral communication. And the roles for oral communication are that the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard of oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without state, and the matter may be referred to the proper center. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. So are there any attendees that would like to speak under oral communication this evening? Seeing none, we move on to recognitions. Does anybody have recognitions for next one?
So I wanted to acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week, which was last week. And we really want to thank all teachers and staff for all they do every day. And just want to really acknowledge the hard work during this very intense year. So thank you to you all.
So we had, we had a busy couple of weeks with appreciation. So we had nurses. So it's Nurse Appreciation Week. And then today specifically is School Nurse Day, Appreciation Day. And then last Friday was Food Service Staff Appreciation Day. So we just want to send a big thank you to all those staff members for, you know, truly going above and beyond in the last couple of years. And specifically Martha Jo Flungert as well for just keeping, keeping the ball rolling in our food department. It's, I know it's been a lot of work for both nurses and staff. So we thank you.
Anything else? It gives you time of year, so I'm sure next week we'll have a lot of things to celebrate as well.
We also will be doing a lot of celebrating and recognizing at each school. And so I will share later tonight list of schedule of all the various school events, recognitions and celebrations that are happening. But there are going to be a lot, all over the place, which is fantastic.
Okay, we have with us Jenna Smith, our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council member, who has been really committed to doing this role and has been kind of the primary person. So welcome Jenna. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
Hi, everyone. For the record, I just want to say I'm not driving. I'm actually outside the Newell Stadium right now because my track meet's going on. Really got permission to like come out, talk to you guys, give you the rundown of what's going on at GHS. So Teacher Appreciation Week, like we just talked about it really quick. Last week during Teacher Appreciation Week, the student council members gave out whoopee pies to a bunch of the teachers at GHS, which is really nice. A lot of them appreciated it, so that's great. Senior banquet was, I want to say two weeks ago. I can't be big certain though. We had our scavenger hunt, which is an annual thing. And we started a new tradition, which was the centerpiece competitions. Like each table, like their parents and them like put together a centerpiece. Neville Clancy actually won that. And it was actually really cool. Yeah, so him and Nick Coolen, like they won it. So they got a couple of free prom tickets. And their centerpiece is a big lighthouse. And it lit up and it had flowers all around it. And it was beautiful. It was really cool. Second place went to Sophia Acosta. And then there is a tie for third and fourth place. And that went to Jack Patton and Jenna Huffnagle. Senior Assassin started. Ms. Clancy, I know you know all about that because round one, I got out her son. I actually have my water gun in with me in the car. I do not leave the house without this thing, I promise. And for anyone that doesn't know what Senior Assassin is, it's a game of battle royale with water guns. We literally just like, there's like certain restrictions. Like you can't do it in school. You can't do it during school hours unless you're off school property. But everyone's assigned a target and you try and assassinate them with water guns. And it gets really competitive. And it was like $5 for each student to join. So really fun. We're on to round two right now. And the participants have like dropped like halfway down. Like it was really intense. Senior Spirit Week.
Do you, you know how many are left Jenna?
Thirty-four at the beginning of the second round. I think that three people have gotten O's. So that'd be like 31 now. But such an interesting game. So if you guys see like high school seniors carrying around water guns, don't be alarmed, they're not going after like random civilians, just their targets. Spirit Week starts on Friday, the 20th. So this is like the lineup for Spirit Week. Friday, the 20th is college or like future destination plans. So you wear like your college shirts, stuff like that. The following Monday is Senior Citizen Day. Tuesday is Toga Tuesday or like Roman God and Goddess. Wednesday is Anything But a Backpack. So instead of carrying like our books and pens and all that stuff in a backpack, people carry it in really weird things. Like I've seen in some videos, people carry canoes or like shopping carts. I'm really excited to see what people come up with. Thursday is Dressing in Parks. And then Friday is our senior picnic at Stage Four. That's Great Color Day. So we're going to have like our senior shirts on. There's going to be music, food. The yearbooks are going to get distributed. And there's going to be a slum and stud. And it's going to be such a fun. So also lawn signs with like congratulations, senior like 2022. Those have been sold and a huge shout out and thank you to all the parents that helped put that together. We really appreciate it. Promenade is June 3rd, same day as the prom, obviously. 5:00 PM in the fieldhouse. Everyone's welcome to come. Prom tickets, we were able, like student council was able to lower the prices to $30 per ticket, which is huge because it's at the Black Swan in Georgetown. Like $30 for a ticket, really good deal. Senior sweatshirts came in yesterday. They started getting distributed, which is really exciting. And the senior countdown is down to 12 days. Terrifying. Student council elections took place today for freshmen and sophomores. NHS officers elections also took place. There is, I'm throwing a lot at you guys right now. I'm talking kind of fast, so apologies for that. The class of 2023, 23, the junior class is having a fundraiser, May 20th at Seaport Grove. It'll be from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Now from the Health Center. I told you guys, I have a lot today. So the free food locker is continuing to deliver food to GHS families. More students have been utilizing the free food locker by going in and getting snacks during the day or bringing food home to their families after school, which is great. In collaboration with the Youth and Peace Movement, Camilla Wilken Bowens, who is a junior, she created a racial equity bulletin board that shares many contributions made by people of color. Eliana Faria, Faith Brown, and Grace Boucher, all as seniors. They created a board on nourishment to help teach students how to keep a healthy body, how to like nourish themselves properly, which is really big because a lot of the students that are in school either don't have the tools to nourish themselves properly or they just don't know how to. So it's really good to see people, especially like my age, like start to speak up about that. And what's really cool about the board that they created is Kyle Clifford, who's a senior, and Sophia Hogan Lopez, who I believe is a sophomore. They translated that like bulletin board into both Spanish and Portuguese. So not only did the English speaking students get access to the board and like the information on it, but also the other language speaking ones. In addition to the board being up, there's been announcements all around the school, like over the live speaker and stuff in all three languages. Kami Cooper, who is a senior, she has been working with Climate Action and Resilience Plan, like that project from Gloucester. And she's in the process of creating a new Youth Advisory Council Board on climate change and to get more info out about how climate change relates to everyone's health. And finally, they voted a new executive board. So this is my last meeting with you guys, which makes me really sad because I've loved doing this. I want to say thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you every other week or however often I came. I really enjoyed it. It actually made me so happy. I was telling my dad earlier today, like this was going to be the highlight of my day, my final school board meeting. So thank you guys so much. So welcome. And yeah, that's it.
Does anybody have any questions? Jenna, we do really want to thank you. Your presence has been beyond enjoyable. It's, we learned about everything that's going on. You shared the enthusiasm of so many accomplishments and so many of the group students and all the diverse activities that go on, you know, from sports to academics to charitable actions that, you know, we could not be more proud of Gloucester High School students for taking on and helping our community with. You're really a positive presence in the community. I think people know they can turn to Gloucester High School when they are in need, which has been great. And we just love your reports. We definitely know what it feels like a little bit to be in the high school, experiencing what you have. And it has been a terrific time to hear such upbeat reports, even though we know it's not necessarily the most typical of school times. But we're happy for you.
Of course, thank you guys so much. If you guys have any questions for the rest of the year, don't be afraid to email me. It's literally my name at gloucesterschools.com. So if you have any questions about anything, don't be afraid to reach out.
We always ask where you are planning on attending college.
I am attending University of New Hampshire next year. And I'm currently enrolled as a psychology major. But I'm thinking that I'm going to switch over to social work just based off of like what I want to do in the future. But next year I will be a wildcat. Thank you so much. Bye.
Okay. We now will move on to much less integrating. But important nonetheless, we move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they'd like to move to consent agenda?
Can we accept the consent agenda?
Sure.
Maria, maybe we can have a roll call vote.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Leah Burger.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Jefferson Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And the next item, we move on to deliberations on educational issues. And we have all of our wonderful principals and our special education director with us. And Emery Jordan leads the class on. Right? And so.
Great, thank you Kathy. So before we get into the school room plan, we'll start with Emery Jordan, the preschool. So over the next two meetings, we'll literally go up the grade span. So start with preschool today, this evening. And then our K to five elementary principal here as well to get the K to five school room plan. And then two weeks from now, we'll have O'Malley, Lynn Beadie here for the O'Malley school room plan. And also after that, that same night, the GHS school room plan. I want to start first, before we get into that, with just a recognition of some great work that is all over West Parish School. So of course, everything matters as we know. But what you see here are staff portraits. Our teacher, Paul Morgan, had students create portraits of every single staff member. I will show them a little bit. Clay, if you want to add anything, you're welcome to because you know more, you live this every day. This incredible visual. You can see that they go all the way down the hallway on the first floor. Are they on the second floor as well?
No, the entire cafeteria and the entire first floor. Literally, we got every member of the building. There were a couple of substitutes that said, we're here often enough, we need a portrait too. And she provided absolutely every one.
So here you see some of the teachers, our food service workers on the right hand side. But students, everyone, all the staff in school have a. And these, as you can see, they're not small. Not quite life size, maybe. Talking about life size, I'm not sure. But they're big and they're colorful. They're really just, really just mixed up excellent.
It was great. It was great. Teachers were taking a selfie with their portrait. It just became quite a thing.
So now we'll get to the other matters here. We stopped sharing. We'll start with Emery Jordan. And my hope, and I think what is that you'll see, that much of this will be familiar to the committee, whether it was our budget priorities presentations in January or updates that have happened along the way. I think you'll see work priorities, action substantive agreements going to be taken next year that look very familiar, which is the way it needs to work, which we build and continue building on the great work that we have and keep making progress step by step. So I think you'll see that in both of the takes. So Emery, take it away. Greg will show your slides and we're ready to go.
Thank you. Thanks Greg for this. So this is our 2022, 2023 School Improvement Plan. When I presented to you earlier, we, it was our inaugural School Improvement Plan for 2021, 2022, for this current school year. As we go through the few slides that I have, what Ben said it very clearly, the strategic areas, which are three, really are the same as they were this current year because really what we need to do is keep adding, building on the work that we've done this year. So Greg, if you could throw this, show the next slide. Our first strategic objective is to continue to provide students with exposure to a range of early literacy and numeracy concepts, social skills concepts, and opportunities for growth and motor skill development through activity and play. These are all the developmental domains that are really critical for early childhood programs and special education programming to address at this, for this age group. And there are a few points that I really wanted to focus on. We've had a lot of conversation this year. I had a conversation earlier with the school committee this year regarding our options, classroom options. We have come to a place where we're going to increase the number of Fuller Day. And I call them Fuller Day because they're not full day necessarily, but Fuller Day options for Gloucester families, both for community peers who are developing typically as well as special education students. As I think most of you know, we have eight classrooms currently in the preschool program. Six of those eight classrooms will be with a Fuller Day option this coming school year. This was a lot of planning between program staff as well as Katie Provost and Ben to see what we could do. And we, I think we came up with a good plan that will allow us to provide programming and services, which our children deserve. And part of that process is to really look at also providing our staff with better tools to help assess students where they are. So we've had, we had started conversations this year about looking at developmental assessment tool, which we haven't used in the past. But we are currently, in collaboration between our evaluation team, classroom teachers, as well as with Katie, we made a determination to pilot a developmental tool called the Brigance, which is a diagnostic inventory of early development. It has both norm reference and criterion reference tools. And so we've purchased that tool, the tool, thanks to Katie. And teachers are now starting to, there's one or two teachers who are currently piloting it with current students that we have. And our intent is to expand that as well. We did give teachers a very brief training in the tool this year. And when we look at our next slide, we'll talk about some of the further supports we'll give to teachers to help them with that. And then also so that we can tailor some of our interventions so that we can, with our existing students, really when we see concerns, implement an RTI or Response to Intervention model for those students that we currently have who are not making effective progress. Greg, the next slide.
There's a little delay.
That's okay. As long as they don't start reading the same slide.
It's all set. I think we're seeing the proper slide.
Yep, I see it, yep. So, so to build on what I just discussed, really providing staff with that comprehensive professional development so that they can implement what we discussed in slide two, which is in the strategic objective one. So provide more training around with the Brigance and also provide support. And that includes providing opportunities for modeling, for consultation, teachers consulting with each other as well as our related service providers and providing them with opportunity and time for collaborative problem solving as well. We also, within this newer model, one of the intents of this newer model of Fuller Day programming is it allows us to provide more inclusive programming for those students who have the greatest need. So also providing staff who are, who are teaching within the, within an integrated setting, the tools that they need to help support all of the students. So number two is really utilizing, helping, providing teachers with the tools that they need to support augmentative and assistive communication within, with consistency throughout the school day. So this year, actually just this week, yesterday, we had a specialist come and talk about what augmentative and assistive communication is. It was all of our staff, classroom teachers, ESPs, as well as related service providers. And it was a good foundational piece. And then our intent is to build on that. And then also to build upon that same thread of providing teachers what they need, provide using, utilizing our BCBA, the district BCBA, to provide continued consultation and PD supports for classroom teachers, ESPs, and related service providers as well too. I think that, so this third strategic area is around the area of strengthening school culture through classroom interventions as well as school-wide programming. One of the, I didn't want to say disappointments, but one of the expectations of this year was to do more around this. But with the pandemic, especially earlier in the year and some of the restrictions that we had, we weren't able to do as much as we hoped we were going to be able to do. So I think that we do, we have started this and I believe that we can really expand on this next year is to really provide more consultation time with the preschool adjustment counselors for teachers. And also providing, with that, also providing the opportunity to increase intentional teaching of social skills and emotional competencies. In other meetings, you've, you've heard of the district-wide initiatives through Amy Cam with our adjustment counselors in school, psychologists, our adjustment counselor is part of that process. And so I think that what she brings from that district collaboration, she also can help support our teachers in bringing that down to the classroom level as well too. And then also to reestablish and expand our preschool family dinners, which we had had previously, pre-pandemic, which were, which was a wonderful opportunity for our families to get together, number one, and get to know each other in a relaxed, casual manner as well as to learn about resources in the community, specifically resources that the open door provides. We also have a history of providing parenting workshops. We want to start that up again by providing Positive Solutions Parenting Workshop at least two times during the school year. And then the adjustment counselor will continue to meet and collaborate with, again, our district adjustment counselors and psychologists to ensure the continuity of intervention and support for families in crisis with children in multiple schools. That has been a huge benefit this year with the intentional collaboration that district support staff have been participating in. And I think that that will help us as we continue through next year as well too. I think that's all the slides that I have.
So school members, you have the full plan in your package. And so whether it's from the plan or Emery's presentation, thank you Emery. Any questions or clarifications for Emery or myself or Katie?
Just building on what I've been working on in the subcommittee, as you were talking about sort of school culture, increased classroom interventions, just wondering about a focus and sort of helping families learn about the importance of attendance. That's just a lot of the theme that we've been working on in the program committee. We're going to bring some of that tonight. But just, you know, I know that that's an issue that begins early and that would be a great place to start educating families about the importance of attending.
It's very true. And I think that, I think before we even speak to parents, one of the, one of the pieces that is really, really important for us is we recognize and honor the fact that this is for many of our families, their first introduction to the school system with children. And really, it's important for us to make sure that that is a welcoming, supportive experience for them. And so really just also, before we even talk about that, really starting with that. And then also, before we start seeing some issues with attendance, really making sure we really are connecting with families if, if, if a child is out once or twice. So that two-way communication is really important for us. And then also trying to really address those barriers that do impact attendance, whether it's families in need of additional support, interventions. I was just having a conversation today with our adjustment counselor about that, about really next year providing as, as, what we thought we were going to do this year was was getting back even closer to normal. But this year, really welcoming families when they first start and using our, in addition to the teachers and their usual welcoming approach, also having the adjustment counselor really meeting with the families and, you know, getting them, having them get to know our program through her lens and then offering her services if they ever need those as well too. So. Does that help? Does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, we just, you know, we're sort of starting, we talked with Attendance Works, the consultant, about sort of starting at the beginning.
Exactly.
Kids who are coming into kindergarten and families having a real firm's foundation on how important attending school is.
So. Hundred percent.
Okay, thanks. On a similar vein, and I'm sorry if you don't know this offhand, but do we know the percentage of students who go from Gloucester preschool to our school system? I asked that because it just made me think about like, right, like that transition. Are we seeing that 80, 90% of them are going into kindergarten in our, in our district? Or are we seeing a little bit more theory?
So let me, so are you asking how, what percentage of incoming kindergarteners are coming from our program? Or are you asking how many of our students attend kindergarten in Gloucester? Sorry.
The second part.
Okay, so the vast majority, there are a few that choice out. The vast majority, I would say 95 to 98%. five to ninety-eight percent of our student population, our residents of Gloucester, we do have a few families that come in from surrounding communities, but not too much. So the vast majority of them do go off to kindergarten in the Gloucester schools. I, I would say we probably will have about three or four who will, who will choice to Rockport this year. But the majority of them are going into our schools. And we do, so we also primarily for our children who have IEPs, we do a whole transition process for that as well, too. So late year IEP meetings, we invite their homeschool staff to come to those meetings. We also set up visits, each special education coordinator from each school comes to see some of, to observe some of the children who are coming into their program as well, too. So, so the vast majority go into K here in Gloucester.
And then are we seeing an increase in English language learner population at the preschool?
Yes.
Is that trend similar?
Yes.
And do you feel like the preschool has enough supports for that population? I just, the reason why I'm asking is because I don't see any specific goals around that population, but, you know, in every other grade, we have a lot of goals and a lot of support. And I want to make sure that we are supporting those families from the start.
So all, it's a great question. And I was just talking about that with a staff person. I can't remember who today as well, too. So technically, the state doesn't require us to identify L English language learners at the preschool level. Number one, there is and Chris Castle would have a better answer to this, but I don't believe there is actually an assessment tool to determine English proficiency for our age group. That's number one. However, I'm SEI endorsed as well as all of our staff. And what we learn when we go through sheltered English immersion courses is that at preschool, we do some of those things that are, that are helpful, just within the context of our programming that are helpful. We use pictures, we repeat. All of those things that are, are helpful for English language learners, that's, that's that is, those are implemented regularly for our population, just because we are preschool. That being said, I do think it might be helpful for our staff to have some additional training. Just, as I said, all of them are SEI endorsed. However, just to learn what are some of the most recent developments around English immersion. Also, we do have some, it's complicated when it comes to language, speech and language. For L learners, if they're delayed in determining whether that's an L issue or whether it's a special education issue, there are no great answers to that, but we do really try to work with our families to determine if, if that is an issue that the families are concerned with. It's, it's complicated, but we really try to address that. And going back to objective number one, an RTI model actually does help us to see if some of those interventions help support learning the language, or is that something that maybe might be a special education issue as well, too? So. I'm talking a lot. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Emery, I think you wrote down a classroom six going to a fuller day. What is that?
So, so we are, we, so when people say full day, we think about, you know, if you think about a private preschool or early childhood center, a full day program could be eight to five, you know, that we just don't have the ability to do that. We are also, because we're a special education program, have to provide the time for our staff to be able to accomplish the special education responsibilities that they have. We have this year alone, we had a hundred and thirty-nine referrals for evaluation. So that, which is that is not our typical, but that's, that's very high. So we have to provide the staff with the time to evaluate students, to meet, to provide annual meetings. So we can't provide a truly full day. However, we can provide enough staffing, so enough programming so that we can call it a fuller day option. So, for instance, instead of having half-day program that might be two and a half hours a day, four days a week in the morning, and then also in the afternoon. So we have a group of kids coming in in the morning from eight-thirty to eleven. And then we have an hour off for staff to take their break and their lunch. And then we have children coming in from twelve to two-thirty. Those are different group of children. So instead of doing that, what we do is we provide four hours of programming, say, from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, five days a week. So it allows us to continue to provide the special education responsibilities that staff need to do, but also provide, instead of a ten-hour a week program, it allows families to have children in twenty hours a week of programming.
I want to put some miss. I lost money to Friday, closed classes. There's a big change. And then I just give Emery, Katie, and Race Clemente tremendous credit. And also the staff, and we're working closely with the staff in terms of, you know, and the staff has been, you know, it's, it's, I want to speak for anyone, but they want to move in that direction as well. They see no value in it for the families and students and also their instruction. And so, but it's, it's a big shift, something that we told, you know, mentioned to the school committee during our budget priority presentation that we were looking at that. And the team is really carrying forward, which is a, you know, just a great, great progress. Got to hand it to the team now. The, so it sounds like increasing the hours in the morning, it's a different subset of students than in the afternoon. So there's no option for parents to have their kids in, in the program longer in the afternoon?
So because we, so we will actually, we will have, no, there's no option for keeping their children in longer. There are some other communities that have, and we're not there yet at all, but may have, it may not be as rigorous a program, but they may have, you know, an extended day. So after twelve-thirty, they may have staffing who may provide less structured type of programming for the afternoon. We are certainly not there yet, and I don't know what that would look like for us. I mean, it might be something we possibly talk about, but it wouldn't be related to the actual type of programming that we would, that we actually provide to, to children. Does that answer your question?
Let me add a little bit, Emery, is, so what you see in other districts is you'll have a preschool, school, school, school program like we offer. It might go for four hours, it might go for five hours, you know. After that, it's just the, after school, after hours, it's really more of a daycare program. That is often typically not provided, not staffed by the teacher, by the preschool teachers, okay, but staffed by either repair professionals who are getting paid additional or other after-school, you know, daycare staff. That, and so, so it's sort of a, but that, those two things combined, those two staff, those two approaches, you know, add up to maybe a seven, eight hours a day, okay? Not all, in fact, you know, many schoolers don't offer that. We don't, we're not there yet. But the movement, that the team's moved to five days a week, and instead of two and a half hours a day, four hours a day is significant. Another piece to remember, unlike private preschools, our teachers are also, you know, TTA teachers. So they also have the benefits and privileges and also work conditions that are defined in the collective argument, too. So that's when, when Emery's talking about responsibility of first education meetings, but also teacher planning, you know, their teacher, their preparation times, lunch break, or lunch and also break. Whereas now they fit that in on Fridays when students aren't there, and that hour between the morning and afternoon session, now they've got to fit it into every school day, those things. Okay, so that's, that's part of the process of, and the challenge of just moving from what we have now to own the schedule. But it's a whole schedule, a male or own the schedule at preschool, you know, just takes a lot of parts.
And I also, I also think it's important to really stress, and I know for some of you, you've heard this before. Our staff also, in addition to their breaks, they also, you know, if you have a typical, if you have a classroom of fifteen students, seven of them are children with IEPs, staff are responsible for the goals and meetings that are all associated with those seven students. So that also has to be fit into the day as well as, you know, we have a number of all of the students who are coming into our program or potentially coming into our program, program. We require teachers to be in every single one of those meetings. So again, we have had over a hundred meetings this year, IEP, whether they were initials or annuals. That's a lot of meetings that not only do our related service providers and our special ed coordinator have to go to, but also every one of our teachers has to participate in some of those program, at those meetings as well, too. So. And we can't have them after school. They have to be during the school day, so.
Sounds like a very challenging situation. I really appreciate what you're trying to do, Emery. Hope it gets easier.
It will.
I have a question. Are we, are you thinking the fall for the fuller day option? And how are we going to communicate that to the community of probably the newest students? I know you have already gave people already in the program, but the next coming up are others that might consider that role model position as well.
So we have utilized our, so if you look on the Gloucester Schools one Facebook page, not webpage, Facebook page, well, actually, it's on the webpage as well, too. But Facebook page, we have another screening coming up. We had a screening in April where I don't remember the number, it was in the teens, number of children that we screened as potential peers. We have one coming up June seventeenth as well. The sec, our secretary has also brought the flyers and posted them at Sawyer Free Library and the YMCA and all of those typical places. There's also a KPN, is it a parent or mom's Facebook group? So Amy Larson from Pathways helps to get me get that information out there as well, too. So we're trying, we're starting to get that information out there.
No more questions. Thank you, Emery. Very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we all age a little bit here and go up to the K five folks. That wasn't a comment on principal. Was not a comment, I'll verify that. But we have principals Joey Genoni, Dan Jewitt, Amy Vascarello, Matt Busco, and I've turned Emel here to help us understand, collaborate on the plans for. I do that too. I do that all the time.
There we go. So we have a joint school improvement plan for the five elementary schools. We do a lot of things in common. We keep our curriculum, you know, on key with each other. It is similar to last year. As Superintendent Lemon said, we are building on what we had, so we'll bring out some changes in what we've done. And Dr. Emel's going to start us off. Thank you.
As always, English Language Arts and math are really key to the elementary, as we've talked about in our budget. Content is really important, so our literacy is shifting. But our, our first goal is really about those core academic subjects. So continuing and strengthening our tier-one ELA and math instruction while simultaneously providing those increased tier-two and three interventions so that we meet the emerging, meet the needs and learn about emerging needs that we have from our students, especially as gaps have emerged or were created through the pandemic. This, during our budget meeting, we talked about the challenges of the fall. We had a brand-new math and focus curriculum. Many of those materials didn't show up until October or November. And that challenged our pacing. So that real continued emphasis of implementing well, our second version of math in focus, it's not a completely new program for us. It's just a modified and refined program, but that causes us to make some adjustments to our report card and the pacing. So we'll continue that work this next year. And then we're really, really excited about having chosen to adopt Witten Wisdom. I know we had some teachers and coaches a couple of weeks ago. That work was intense and in-depth and really rigorous, and we're really excited for that tier-one training and implementation to happen with one core program this year. We've talked about the importance of those foundational skills and continuing to implement foundations, K through three, will help us keep that going and really make that consistent for all of us. And then we've had data meetings for ten years now, which is really awesome. So continuing to have three data meetings a year where we look at our data and the interventions that, the core program that we have and the interventions we have students in and the amount of growth. We used to call it ambitious growth. Dibbles has said, we don't have ambitious growth anymore. We're just all trying to get students to where they need to be. And so those data meetings are really important. And before I pass it back to Ms. Vascarello, I would just say, I'm really, really thankful for the increase of math courses that we had this year across the district. It really made a difference as we're working towards this goal one.
I also am thankful for that. I think I asked for one five years running. I forgot one. So thank you. And from those data meetings, we always target for all of our students to make growth, whether they are high flyers or struggling or anywhere between, we always want them to make growth. But we are particularly looking at that lower twenty percent to make sure we fill the gaps and move them forward. The added challenge, though we're very excited about the new curriculum and can't wait to get it implemented, the RTI scheduling part is a, is a fun challenge for administrators. I have a weird liking of making schedules, so I take it as a challenge to fit that RTI time in because we are not going to let that go because it's been so effective over the years. So even though our model is changing a little bit, we are going to make sure we continue to target students who need additional support and to fill in gaps. Our interventions will be targeted and we will continue progress monitor as we go. We often will monitor students, and if they are not making the progress we're expecting, we'll change it up. We work closely with both the literacy and math coaches and Title I or EL, special ed, whatever the case may be, to make sure students are getting what they need. So we'll continue to do that. And we're going to need time to do all that. So we're going to be continuing to use our common planning time to collaborate with all the stakeholders so that we make sure that students have the interventions and instructions that they need to succeed.
Oh, it's up. It's the same.
So I think it's half the fact stays the same, it's just the words change.
No, sorry. Everyone who's just looking at my like expressions.
So Ms. Genoni and I are going to take this one. And this is all about social and emotional needs of our students. And how we're hoping to keep on attacking that on a daily basis. I think if you think about this pandemic and we think about the incredible what it's done for our children, it hasn't been easy on adults and children alike. And we all see the need to increase our interventions moving forward. So we're talking about some school-wide things that we're going to do for all the students. And then we'll talk about some of the things that we're going to do for our most vulnerable students as well to help them. So we're going to prioritize our social skills groups. Just a quick story, my brother has, works in, in an office since March of 2020, and he's scared to go back now. He hasn't been with people. So our kids, while they have been in school, it's been different. You know, as surges have come and gone, and we've worn masks, we haven't worn masks, it's been changing rapidly. So we really want to keep trying to get kids together to work on their social skills together. So we're going to keep prioritizing that through either lunch bunches or in-class work, working with school psychologists and school adjustment counselors. And then within the classrooms, we're going to prioritize our. And then within the classrooms, we're going to prioritize our cooperative learning, getting projects together, inquiry-based learning, those types of things where kids are working together and that give and take of that type of work. We're gonna, we, I hope we have this, but we're going to keep looking at it, but clear school-wide expectations for behavior in all the common areas of the building. And it's every principal here's goal to have every child know what's expected of them at any point in their day and no matter where they are. So we always want to make that, keep that clear. And then we have been using Second Steps with our students, but it's we're, we're going to continue to develop a social, emotional curriculum used throughout the classrooms beyond just Second Steps. And Ms. Ms. Genoni can kind of talk a little bit more about some of the curriculum.
Sure. So as Mr. Fusco said, Second Steps has been with us for quite some time now. To be honest, probably 20 some odd years ago, when I was a fifth grade teacher, I was using Second Steps. And we know that students' needs have changed very much so, especially post-COVID and being out of school. So we have been piloting at some of our elementary schools, the Trails program with some success. And I believe that we are going to continue to look at that and possibly expand it into some of our other schools for next year. We're also always looking for ways to supplement any kind of curriculum. So when we're able to, we've been very creative about finding ways to have school-wide assemblies or grade level assemblies as appropriate for gathering to kind of build those skills within our student besides just the actual curriculum in the classroom. There's been learning learning opportunities at different grade levels where our counselors have pushed in and worked with the grade levels to support, especially as things have come up that are unique to this post-COVID world that we're in. We have identified developmentally appropriate programming for substance abuse prevention. Unfortunately, we've had to grapple with that even at the elementary school level this year and, and last year, especially. So we're finding ways to deal with that. We are very thankful that Amy Cam's new position has allowed her to be a resource at the elementary level, which is new for us this year. And she has been working very closely with our crisis teams to even identify how to look at statements students make or actions and decide where they sort of fall on the continuum of crisis and, and what the appropriate responses are. And the next step to that will be then to look at what kind of programming we can put in proactively to teach our students about, you know, what's happening in the world and how they can navigate that as they become more socially adult than we would like at the elementary school level sometimes. And along with that, improving the digital citizenship. So that too has brought on a whole new meeting. We are working on pro books more than ever and students are far more savvy than many of our staff at navigating different screens and finding all kinds of ways to access information that's not necessarily school appropriate or age appropriate. So we want to make sure that we're working with them, not only just finding ways to pocket and keep them safe, but making them be responsible when they're using these type of machines in the classroom. We're contending smartwatches and phones and all kinds of things that are now a part of everyday life for students as young as kindergarten. So we want to make sure that they're using those tools responsibly. And, and when they're not using good learning opportunities to teach, what can we do? And how do we respond when we see things in our social media and what's appropriate and what's not?
So for a long time, or for at least my child's experience in middle school, they were not allowed to have phones with them. It could be in their backpack. It could be in their locker. Same.
That's the same.
It is the same. The smartwatches get complicated, right? Because they're on your wrist. So that can get a little bit tricky because things pop up, even that the student might not be initiating. So there's that piece to it. And then we've had to contend with, you know, TikTok and all the things that happen after hours, the Snapchat, the social media sites, how that bubbles into school. So even if it's not literally happening in our building and on our grounds, it very much is the topic of conversation and controversy and arguments within schools. So how do we help teach them to be more responsible in and out of school with it? So that it's not, you know, getting away from what they need to be doing at school, learning and focusing.
And also how do we teach and tell parents and families about what's appropriate? Just one example that, that some videos use, as usually frequently is, present in elementary school, like by law and by those terms of agreement for all the sites you just mentioned, nobody under 13 should be a, a member of them. You know, and most parents don't know that actually. So does that, that's a message for example, is, needs to be getting across. And so I think as we go forward, as schools go forward is, how clear can we be, how clear will we be about what's appropriate? What isn't, what should be doing in terms of use of phones or shouldn't be doing, not only just at school, you know, but, but you know, educationally and socially, you know, we have a lot of expertise in this. And we have, I think, need, that's something to say.
So just on that, you started to answer my question. Because I know anecdotally about things young children are watching and discussing. That really shocked me. And how much can you, I mean, it's clearly, it's not happening in school hours, but it comes and it pleads into the school day. I mean, how much, aside from things that young children are not allowed to or not permitted to be, but there are just television shows and how, it seems so tricky to me, but how can you talk to families about that? I mean, I, I know teachers are dealing with that. But I'm just wondering, is there a way to speak with families about small children watching sort of deeply violent things and bringing that into a classroom?
Of playing deeply violent video games.
Right.
Or watching YouTube with things that are inappropriate.
Right, no way.
I know at the Beeman School and as you do as a parent, I have taken the opportunity when it was appropriate and it was pervasive enough in a particular grade level to address parents in an open letter about my concerns and what I was seeing and the types of conversations that it was bringing to, you know, our unstructured times like lunch and recess and, and to go as far as to suggest having conversations with their kids, looking at what's on the phones or, or what it is that they're watching on the Netflix account or whatever it might be. And I've tried to name very explicitly what the fallout of that looks like in the classroom and on the programs.
It does have fallout.
And we'll call parents personally too, if it's, you know, bad enough. So, you know, I've gotten open letters as well. But yeah, we just try to handle them as they come in because the technology's changing and shows are changing. So it's always something trying to stay ahead of it.
Two, actually, three things. Do we need a policy change around watch? You know, digital watch use. I don't know if we specifically say anything about watches in our policies. Do you have any idea?
I, I, I don't know from looking at it recently, it would be likely just because of public policy creating, it wasn't a thing.
Yeah.
Most likely. So I, I would be surprised if it was. It, it may be general enough. So you can pause on it. So I think probably need to look at it mostly because there's real, there's real value in little access during the school day, even more so than we have. And the reason I say that is, you know, there are a lot of pressures growing up, you know, from peers, especially in the, and, and you know, it used to be that you could get away from those at certain points. Classroom definitely, more a place where, you know, at least some of that was contained to the kids, kids with, with you in the same room. Your, your, your home many times, you know. Unfortunately now, kids can never get away from that. In fact, when they're in class, it's not just pressure of peer involvement, social involvement, for just the kids in the class. It can be from anywhere. When you're at home and, and you think you have some private time or alone time, just to be a kid, you know, by yourself, maybe with a sibling or one friend. You still, if you have the phone with you, I'm not sure what's called a phone. You have everybody with you.
Yeah.
And, and more. And so, you know, that that's unfortunate and they said
Yeah.
that, that kids can't, it's very hard, harder and harder for kids to escape to a moment where they don't have those pressures. And so I think it, it does both in just, you know, language and, and, and speaking up about it, but perhaps the policy as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, I think it helps be, and then also, I mean, pre-pandemic, in the good old days, talking, talking in programs, we started to have conversations around like, we need to be having these conversations in preschool with our parents, like the digital citizenship, the digital learning around how to parent in this age needs to start very, very early, unfortunately. So as a district, I think it would be really helpful for us to wrap our head around how we when and how we start that with families and have those conversations much sooner than elementary school.
Just to piggyback on what Sam said, I, I think a lot of it is parents anxiety, trying to support student anxiety, but it just exacerbates it because there, that tether is just always there. So really helping families understand what a young child's brain can and can't handle.
I mean, I likened it clients to like, imagine if you were sitting in your house and somebody was knocking at your door every two seconds. Right? Like with all the notifications that hop up and text messages, it's like somebody intruding your space and your brain space every three seconds, right? So creating a boundary around that. And for little kids who can't really create that boundary, we need to do that as parents. So anyway, I do think that it would be worth either programs to start really talking about how at the district we have these conversations much sooner with parents and in what venue we do it. And then back to the Trails and Second Step. How many, and you might not know exactly, are we seeing that there are a large percentage of parents opting out of those programs? No, not at all. Okay. I'm just good. Because I know you can, you have the option to opt out though.
It only, so West Parish, I think, is the only school using the Second Step safety units.
Got it.
And the safety units have an opt-out option.
Okay. So those units, do you see a lot of parents opting out?
It used to be one a year. We haven't had any.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is the Trails program, it sounds like, is the provincial plan to kind of phase out the Second Step or?
Yeah.
Yes. I was really impressed with the presentation about that a few months back. Then we had some of the coaches in educational coaches in last month and gave us kind of the lowdown on Witten Wisdom. I could have been more impressed with that. And, and I've actually read the Knowledge Gap, which is a very I haven't read a book that fast in 10 years. So really impressed just with that general sense of direction of, hey, that's where we're going. And I'm always concerned about the kids, from my own experience as a, as a father of three adult children now, about the kids that are, you know, that, that, that can fall between the cracks. But since I've been on the school committee, I've also kind of said, what about those exceptional students? You know, what about the kids that are really, you know, exceptional learners? And I certainly was never one of those, but I, I appreciate the fact that there are students like that. And, you know, we, we, we focus so much on, you know, filling those gaps for those kids that can't. Are, are we meeting the needs of those kids that are, what I would classify as exceptional learners? Do we, are we able to recognize that? That's a good question.
Yeah. So when I talked about finding the time for RTI, I probably should have added that too. At East Gloucester, we're kind of all still figuring out, but we're calling it a win time and we're all playing with that. And it's what I need. The win time. So some of it is filling in the gaps and in RTI. Some of it is enrichment. Some of it is project-based learning. Some of it is, you know, taking a, a question that they have and digging deep and, you know, kind of discussing it and debating it depending on the grade level. It might be book clubs where you go from a supported book club for students that need a little more support to independently run book club at like a fifth grade level where they're really challenging each other and having some nice discourse about book. So we, it's definitely built in. So in the win block will give us that opportunity to do that. Because it's what I need. What I need, it might be different than what you need or what somebody else needs, right?
I, I just think that those exceptional learners, the Boston Newsflash, we need those kids too.
We have them. We have, we have lots of them. Yes.
Yeah, we have. Exactly. And, but we need them long-term. And those are the ones that would end up being a benefit to those kids that, you know, help.
And that's when we look at growth, we're looking at every student growing. Because just because they have met the expectation of the benchmark, we don't then just stop. We want them to continue to grow beyond. So we, to look at the growth of all students, we start as long as they're moving at, at productive rate. That's what we're looking for.
Well, just as a final comment, I could not be anyone, when people ask me, how's it going on the school path? People that run our schools are so impressive and started funny. So I could not be any more impressed with the work you're doing.
And, and we even have another goal. Dr. Jewitt has not spoken yet. So, so we're going to let him go.
All right. Well, our, our third, I've never heard the term digital citizenship before. That's quite odd. I, I know, I've, I've got a little boy who, you know, was introduced to an iPad at an early age because his, uh, his grandparents on, on his mother's side were in Holland. So we got him an iPad so we could talk to them. And it's, it's, it's frustrating. I don't know if there is a solution. I don't know if anybody knows like the special method of keeping kids away from things they should be doing on their web. Because I know I tried to block YouTube. But the problem is like, oh, I just want them to watch YouTube Kids. But you block the URL, you're blocking both. You're blocking YouTube Kids. It's, it's, it's annoying. So, and, and my son's, my son, you know, is, okay, I think he's smart, but I, I took, I took shit off, right? He went to the browser and got the URL and was going through the browser. I'm like, what are you, like, huh? It's amazing. I don't know if there is a solution, but about the watch thing, I had so much thoughts. And do we even need a new policy? There, there is extensions of the phones, of the mobile devices. They're essentially, you know, partial, kind of partial of, of that device. So can we just say they can't have the iWatches? If we're saying they can't have the phones.
Well, I think the question is, does our policy say electronic devices that are allowed?
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to see what that is because, you know, the more time they spend off their, their devices, the better they are. And, and, and at school is, is a great time to say, hey, guess what? You can't even have, you know, they can't have their phones at lunch, right? Is that right?
No.
So, yeah, I mean, I'd love to see that they can't use their watches as well. So anything you can do to help in that respect, let us know.
Our, our third goal was around attendance. And it was, it was part of our plan last year. And while we made progress on this goal this year, we didn't make as much as we would have liked because COVID had other plans for us. And in the short term, you know, we, our attendance this year was impacted by COVID, by other illnesses, by families having pent up vacations that they, you know, unapologetically went on after two years of being at home. Nonetheless, we've made some real progress, which is we've been working with attendance work. I know that a district policy is coming before you. And so a lot of that background work, that really foundational work has been done this year in terms of building our attendance teams, in terms of both on the building level and the district level. Really taking a long look with attendance works at, at what we could be doing better. And I think that policy is a starting point. And we're now kind of in a pivotal stage as we hopefully emerge from this pandemic that we take that policy from something that was punitive to something that really is meant to engage families. And at first try and establish, you know, and return to our norm, our attendance norms. And, and then go beyond that, that we move beyond where our attendance was in 2019. And, and then we see steady improvement and that we see that kids, whether they're in elementary school or high school, want to come to school. And, and that when they're here, that they're engaged in, in meaningful work and And uh and that when they're here, that they're engaged in in meaningful work and that starts by building uh, you know, partnerships with families. And so I I think while looking at the data this year, um our attendance data is uh just reflects the reality of this pandemic. But I I think some really important foundational work has been done and and a lot of work to do in the years ahead.
Can we keep him around for the policy discussion of plans later?
Dan, I'm gonna head home.
Thank you very much. I don't know if Emery's here, so I'll say I started tomorrow on person, but uh just we appreciate this group of folks, Emery included, um uh its group leaders, educators. They have just poured themselves into this work in the past two years. It's been no harder year than this year for any of us. And when you have the responsibility of many, many individuals, students, of course, staff, family on your shoulders like like they do, like these six folks do. It is incredibly complicated, difficult work. They handle it with grace, professionals, and expertise every day. They have incredible collaborators with each other and um we are lucky, lucky people to have been working for us and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you should run away.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Mayor Berga.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy, yes, and Mr. Mulgash.
Yes.
Well, last thing, I'm a little late at the game on this and thankfully these folks are usually nice enough to me that didn't give me grief. But May first, the school principals appreciation. Um, missed it.
It was a Sunday.
There were so many. It was a Sunday.
It's a Sunday. Thank you.
That was, that was.
You're really, it was on a Sunday.
Yeah, it's wrong. Anyway, so it won't be missed ever again and I apologize.
We're gonna have a calendar of every single appreciation.
We tried to get everyone to do.
Progress, we make a lot of progress, we make a lot of progress. Sorry about that.
We appreciate every day.
We feel it every day.
Every day is for here.
Thank you.
Alright, so we can go. Let's move on. Oh, thank you. I was charging my computer, that's why. There we go. Alright, um. Share my screen.
List of events.
One step at a time here, a minute.
I scrolled through it earlier.
It's a it's a lot. Alright. I walked in uh into the cafeteria engines, not you, not a public engine, but cause I have a car that can get in there and and as I I walked in, there are all, many of them are right there, obviously, connecting that end of the building and it's just like, wow, great. Many of the, many of the, sorry, at West Parish, many of these portraits.
Those portraits, yes.
They're excellent. Alright, so um in terms of uh our education issues uh through big chunks of it, um uh Amy Mager to give us an update on the on the school naming, um I'm just gonna do uh the background summary here just to remind folks, not only remind folks in the room, but also folks who are listening at home that that we're already been working hard um on the AGS best school naming, the naming of the of the consolidated school. This goes back to last year when the school committee, after um you know, going through a few different drafts, uh approved the name process in December twenty one. Uh it's an inclusive process that uh um that the school, myself and the school committee um worked on to make sure that um both, that students of both schools, current students as well as those who have moved on to O'Malley and the high school play a central leadership role in the process. Um, it's a part, part of what it's about is working to bring the two school, school communities together. Um, and then also at that point, the school committee voted that the school would not be named after an individual. So that's, those are the basic concepts of process that school can improve in December twenty one. I'll hand it over to Matt and Amy. They'll give us an update. We're, we're working, uh have hit a couple of milestones here and there's a lot of work being done and then we'll look at next steps as well.
Alright, so first, let me just say that the group of kids that we're working with are really fantastic. It's been a lot of fun um working with them. Um, they're really into it, so it's been really great. So um we uh have been taking in the nominations. We put signs out around uh the city, places where people could vote um online as well, um email, written submission. So we got a good map. As you can see, we got uh seventy one nominations, um which included about fifty plus different names. So we were really excited with with what we got. Um, now we're kind of starting to parse through them um and to look at them and to um start whittling it down.
So we meet most Wednesday, Wendy, Wednesdays. Sorry, we took a few off in April because we were waiting for the submissions to come in. So we're now back in full swing. Um, we met today. Uh, the students are really enjoying kind of getting into the names and some of the history uh because on the Google forums, people would give um reasons why they put in a name. And so they were, you were helping them look up some history of certain parts of the city and what the name might mean. And they are working to put together a slide for each of the ten finalists. When we get it down to ten, we're still whittling. Um, but when we get there, they'll have slides for each one to present to the community. Um, we'll get some public input. In particular, we'll get um alumni input of both East Gloucester and veterans. Um, so there'll be uh a presentation of semifinalists and we'll be getting community input virtually and, you know, in some the alumni might be in person. Um, and then from that input, so we'll be asking specific questions of not just vote, because it's not gonna be a vote, it's tell us why you like this. What, how does this represent our community? How does this bring our two commu- two schools together? Um, because our community, school communities are different and we are eager to come together and join and we want to represent um that process. So we're going to be asking for input from people from around the city on for that. And eventually we will get down to four. Um, the small presentation that we will have for the ten will grow because we will include all all or most of the input that we get from the community to then present to you. Um, and that will be a time that we'll be here, but we won't be talking. Our wonderful students who have been doing so, such a great job and are really owning it. They're they're saying things like, you know, twenty years from now, we can go and tell people, I made, I helped name that building. That was part of the process. Like, and this is why it was chosen. And they're really excited about it. So it's fun to see. Um, we have four wonderful teachers that are helping to guide them, two from East Gloucester and two from veterans. Um, so to watch the process is has been fun and we're eager to have them have, get down to the four eventually to you. Um, we're trying to keep on the timeline, but it it takes a little while, so we'll, we'll see how closely we get to that.
Um, and then uh, oh, just one thing is uh all the names, all the names that are submitted will be released once we get down to the ten, ten cent finalists. As we're working through them, you know, right now, they're, um, but you know, it's, it makes sense for everyone to see all that were nominated. Um, you know, and that's should be publicly available as our stuff, but we're gonna wait till we get to the part of the process where we're ready to, for them to be available.
Quick question, what does, what does the whittling process look like? I mean, are we assigning points to each name and then?
So we, we, first, easy whittle is the matching names, right? So um if eight people said Pascoella Elementary School, I go for it, but um but it wouldn't match your criteria. But that would be one submission because you would narrow it down. So that was the easy whittling. And then we started talking about um what the names meant. Um, do they represent, so there were some criteria. Do they represent the two communities coming, coming together? Do they honor Gloucester's history? Do they speak to, you know, the city of who we are and what we represent? And it was interesting to hear um the students talk about different things. Like some were like, oh, I really like that name, but it's not representing Gloucester. It's representing maybe a nearby town or maybe something else. So we were like, well, they want it to be a Gloucester specific name. So it was, it's very nice to hear the children have that conversation. Um, some of them are bringing in, you know, some of the history that they know and they're asking questions. We, like I said earlier today, we're not gonna give up any names, nominations today, but you were helping a student reach, research the history of one particular name because the person who submitted it gave some, but first of all, we want to verify, but we also want to get, dig a little deeper. So they're having a great time doing that and we, there was kind of a, we went around how many, and this committee are feeling this one should move forward. So there was a a point system done that way. Um, there were clear ones where everybody was like, that's a great name. It's going forward. And then there's others we, they kind of haven't developed up, but um, so it's a process.
But good rich discussions. I mean, really, really good so far. So I've, it's nothing that they're taking lightly and it's um certainly putting a lot of thought towards it.
And we have third graders all the way up to, I think our oldest are tenth graders.
Yeah.
And they are all very committed. Um, today we put them out of their comfort zones because uh think that like the middle schoolers wanted to do their group together. And we said, you know what we're gonna do? Break it up. So we have like elementary and middle and high working together. They gr- they groaned for a moment and then we're quickly into um their name that they were researching and getting ready to present. And they were, you know, working together. The high schoolers and even middle schoolers are really becoming leaders and like, um, I think there's one pair that one might have babysat the others and that, I mean, they're really becoming mentors to each other. And it's wonderful. And the younger students have a voice. They're being heard too. So um it's it's a great process.
For, thank you for improving your process. And as as we uh had hoped and expected, um all the great stuff's coming from it. Um, I think for me, even none more important than than at some point, those students can look back twenty three years and say, I helped make that school.
And the others that can say, my name's on the D anymore. Yeah. I just, I don't know if it's appropriate, but if it is, it would be really cool for you guys to video some of those conversations that it's yet, that are having, students are having. Cause I imagine at some point, there'll be sort of a digital sort of memory book about this process, you know? Yeah, time capsule or something. And those conversations, I think, would just, it would be sad to let those sort of just
I think you're going, you're going to see those when they make the presentations to you. Cause they're gonna, they're gonna stand up and feel a little more hesitant than others. But you have to present. You do.
And I can also, another way, so so video and then video and also, um, but but also asking them about the process when they come, obviously, they'll be needed, but also ask the process. Let's hear from them, their reflections on how it's been going, what they've been learning, some of the things. And that's another way to reflect, great. Alright, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And and just in terms of timeline, as as Amy said, drastic with the timeline, the timeline, we keep to getting something to you at the end of the school year. Try your best on that. Things should take one or two, no way. But we'll, we'll, they're, they're, keep on working and we'll get to work.
Anybody has not gone onto the school project website more recently, there's, you know, always continually updated videos by our.
Our Abbott and Costello.
He's actually running in the halls already and had to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
I love those videos.
That's kind of a softball right there. I dragged Amy through this.
Yeah, it gets me to do it.
That was a nice little plug. So we have the 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 product setup here. See, we have, we add pictures almost every week, every couple of weeks to give up folks updates, going for posts. Uh, as as Amy and Matt were able to go into the, into the building, I mean, like, you know, like up into the building. Um, and also we have a new uh on the top, a banner that for, that gives notices to the community about any um sort of extended hours or any changes in uh, you know, site, on the, on the site that that so people can keep that updated. And then also we're adding weekly updates uh every, so, so always updated.
But being in the building, we were on the second floor, you can see it spray painted where the walls are going to be. So you could tell when you're moving from one classroom to another or the small group space or the extended loading area. It was really
It's amazing.
amazing to see. Yeah.
It was very cool how you walked around and showed that. I mean, you know, I think it gives people a sense of like, this is a building information, not just a construction site.
Yeah, it's gonna be quite a bit.
It's gonna be amazing.
Please.
Alright, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Fusco.
Alright, now we get to overwhelm Smith Watson.
It's so fun. Too much.
Good night. Clear on place.
You do it.
Um, then. Okay, I worked through all these because you have them, but I'll show, I'll just put them up there. So folks who are watching from home or wherever they might be, uh, and to see some of these, uh, how it, how it feels. So we're, I obviously are already doing this as just as early as senior bank would happen on April twenty eighth, um, May eleventh. So we have, you know, here at the high school, we have spirit. Um, actually, Ken did a great job of going through most of it. Here it is written down. But of course, um, uh concerts, um, of course, and jazz, um, there's active recognitions of a, a, a whole variety of them. Actually, one that's not up here is May thirteenth, JROTC. Um, uh, recognition ceremony is this Friday at five, five o'clock.
And you said it's not up there now?
That's not, that should be May thirteenth, JROTC. Guys should have gotten invites. Yeah, I woke by home. You did, right. Sorry about that. Um, that's one other reason we put this up there. Um,
What was the day again?
This Friday, five P M. Um, most, probably, I I I'm just used to last year when everything was in the, was in the field house. But that doesn't make sense. Um, so it's probably auditory, on one of these places. And then also obviously moving towards um, you know, uh, all the various things around um recognizing and celebrating seniors and move towards graduation. Um, uh, but so you can see them all there and where they are and that sort of thing. Show up to some, don't show up to others. Well, then, O'Malley Middle School, so similar, uh, I mean, similar in terms of like types of things, uh, move update. Fifth graders coming up to to O'Malley on June sixth to continue that transition. Um, and then uh last year, we had eighth grade closing ceremony outside for the first time ever, maybe.
It was great.
Yeah, and so trying to do that again this year, it really was wonderful to have them outside. It was a cordless day. Great music playing and and just lots and lots of families. Uh, but you can see combination boat trips and concerts happening there. And then, oops, and then across our elementary schools, everything from the wax museums and reading nights and um and field trips and field days. Um, also Plum Cove will have its, um, their concerts as well. Plum Cove will have, is doing Annie's, Annie Kids, their performance of their, of their musical, um, and June ninth and ten. Um, some move up days to O'Malley. Um, and then um uh, another piece is the Project Adventure Field Trip. It's a two day field trip. Um, is it two days?
Yes, yes. Two days.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, at the, oh, I see, yeah. So I'm looking at veterans is Thursday, Thursday, Friday, June second, June and and third. Uh, that's for the whole fifth grade. That is another transition activity and a coming together celebration activity, but also transition activity towards, towards O'Malley. That's new this year. Um, folks are excited about, but then you also do a combination of different types of, you know, learning nights, celebration learning nights as well across, across elementary schools. I think we have West Parish is there. Even. Yeah, I think all, yeah, and preschool as well. What he goes and he goes enrichment event? I do not know what that is. But it sounds like.
You're, you're running that. You're running.
It sounds like you're, you're right. Definitely everything for that, right? Um, but just, uh, I know, again, um, so all across. And I think, I think the, the, one of the most important reasons to share this is to um, just celebrate that we haven't been doing these things for two years, all of them for two years. And this, you know, full scale, we did a bunch last year, you know, we're able to, um, but you know, And this, you know, full scale, we did a bunch last year, you know, we're able to, um, but you know, do more this year and getting back to, you know, things are not normal, but, but getting back to some real celebrations and rituals and traditions that, that are a big part of what needs to, uh, be at our schools.
Just to say, June seventeenth, there's another in, in-person preschool screening, we just wanna
June seventeen.
June seventeenth, so we wanna highlight that for families.
Great. Good, yeah, yeah, it's good, but we'll add that. So this will be posted, but also, yes, absolutely. And then, uh, any questions out of yours? And moving back to, I'll get code update. Okay, that code update, so here we go, uh, this is the wastewater testing results. You can see it's going, been going up and down. Um, a little bit of, I'm, I'm being honest here, a little flattening there from two weeks ago. Um, meaning it's not going up, uh, as, as significant, uh, as higher rate as it did the week before, two weeks ago. Uh, but we don't know where that's headed. It is impacting our schools, so we have seventy four cases right now across our schools that you can see highly concentrated in two schools and it's spread across the others, meaning that's O'Malley, Gloucester High. I'll go into some more detail about O'Malley, what, what's been happening at O'Malley last week really. Um, that's just the, um, pattern there. Um, but you can see that's, that's more cases than we would have expected and really want right now, right? Um, this is sort of the, the recent testing results. Um, you can see this past weekend, a ninety-four pool test participants, that includes, they added a day of, of, of pool testing at O'Malley. Um, that was, that was last week we added, so that, that, that includes, must include the Fridays. We, last week we pulled tested at O'Malley on Monday, Friday, and then Tuesday this week, okay? At the same time, we've been doing a lot of, uh, sending a lot of apple tests. Um, you can see the positives reported, the positives on the pool test, still waiting for the results of of the tests that were done on Tuesday in schools. Um, uh, to do reflex testing, so that, that'll happen some more tomorrow, so we'll make it some more time tomorrow for that. Here's O'Malley. And, um, you know, it's, I, I've, I've kept the school committee and with families to loop all the way through, uh, communication almost every, every, every school day just about until probably through Monday, um, and maybe yesterday as well, I can't remember what's there right now. But as you can see, it's getting better. Um, obviously a real clear curve here. Um, and at twenty eight now, that's not fabulous, um, but we hope that this continues. What we did see was, um, uh, last week in two different houses, um, Boatport and Yeah, two, sorry, uh, two. Right, and we thought I would hold houses down. Um, two houses were higher, uh, last week at the, toward the middle and, and at, at the weekend, that's when we reached out to those families directly and offered, um, you know, directly to them, saying this is happening in your house. Um, uh, if you wanna get, uh, the testing of your child in school or at home, let us know if you are, are, are already registered. And then at the beginning of, of this week, um, Light and Phoenix, of those, of those two houses, they're two B houses, okay? They went, one was six, one was seven, thank you. Boatport and Boat were higher last week. So, uh, Boatport and Boat have gone down and Light and Phoenix have gone up. Um, and we reached out to Light and Phoenix like, like those standards that we did Boatport and Boat last week, okay? So a lot of testing there, there's a lot of attention on it. Uh, one thing to report, uh, I've already reported to you, but to the community is that we checked with the state epidemiologist from the State Department of Public Health, with, uh, and the Department of, uh, Educations, uh, you know, it's the top person on, uh, handling COVID. And also Max Schenk, the, uh, Gloucester Department Health Director. All of those said in separate conversations with Jeff Parko, um, and myself, that, uh, we were doing everything we could do that they were pressed by it. Um, uh, I think say, if you honestly mentioned one thing that, that she wouldn't have thought of that we're doing is, um, but really, um, leaving no stone unturned. And then also, uh, Max Schenk asked about communication. And so obviously, we'll share with them what we're doing, so, um, you know, um, it, we're being vigilant, we're being communicative, and we're also looking for patterns and responding. Questions about, hopefully they know it's going.
Alright, this isn't only about a name.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Um, so two things, first, when you have the wastewater, um, wrap up, that's from last week, that's not from this week, right? We haven't gotten the wastewater.
Oh, um, uh, when I say that, sorry, the most recent one, which survived.
The most recent one, right, this is from last week.
Right, 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 right.
Um, and, um, when you, I know that there's no longer contact tracing.
Yes.
So, um, I know anecdotally that those cases at O'Malley have, are, have siblings in all, in, at all levels.
Yeah.
Or at least some of them do. Um, so do we have any sense of in-school transmission? Is where, you know, are kids? Is it spreading in the school or do we have any sense of that?
We, we don't really know anything I, I, because we're not kind of, anything I say would be speculation on my part, honestly. Yeah, so I really don't wanna, I don't wanna speculate. But we don't, without contact tracing, it's hard to know, other than speculation, yeah.
Fair enough. Anecdotally, which is not data, but I'm hearing about a lot of cases in the schools or a lot of families impacted by this. So, um, so just sort of, you know, the, the numbers reflect that, right? Our numbers are pretty high. Um, so just sort of, you know, just the obvious question.
No, they're, they're, they're high, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, um, and, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see that, you know, sorry, here, they're not high across all schools, I mean, better than zero, you know? Um, that, of course, you know, and then this is a combination of people getting PCR tests or, or pool tests or PCR tests and a combination of rapid tests that are happening at home, you know, or at school for, for kids who may be symptomatic. You know, and, um, but I think the other thing that's, that's of note, that there's, I don't know if it's good, bad, or, or indifferent, but you know, are we starting to live with it, you know? I'm not sure that's good or bad, I don't know, you know, but, but I think, you know, um, that, because I guess the reason I say that is level of anxiety isn't there. Again, for better or, I don't know, uh, but, um, but it's just, it's different, people are responding differently. They're, they're, they're being responsive, they're getting tests and stuff, but, but we're sort of playing along, you know? I'm not saying that we still have the gamut of anxiety and fear, okay? Um, but you know, you're sure you have everyone at every step, right? Not like everything's all calm, okay, but, but we definitely see people like playing through, you know? Now, really important, like we've been doing, be vigilant, okay, and as we suggested, you know, you know, there's come over emails, you know, we encourage people to wear masks, okay? Um, haven't gone beyond that yet. Um, you know, when, when we were talking to the three excellent people we talked about, they were saying, you know, you get up to, you know, you know, moving it on ten percent, between, you know, you know, up, up, all the way with those seventy, that's, that's seven thirty-five people in the building. You start getting close to that, you know, you really, you really, you know, it says something to do here. Um, you know, the clothes, we got into this fifty threshold, um, uh, close to fifty, this, this is a couple add, added on. I think I, you know, there was a forty-seven, I reported to, uh, the last, whatever, six months. Um, you know, and now we're coming down again, you know? Again and again, you've seen, we're at a place where we gotta watch it closely and, and slowly at the time it's coming out, so. Um, we're, you know, fingers crossed that's happening.
And are we just, are we sort of reminding everyone, especially as the weather improves to, you know, we can be opening windows, we can open windows more on the bus? Like, you know, we do have other ways to
Yeah, so, so what I, what I think that's, that's helpful is, is certainly I'll talk to your parents about that. Teachers, when, when they can, they're, they're, they're doing that, and that's, you know, that's probably could remind them, but I don't, happy to, but I think folks, you know, they know that they've been doing it, a lot of teachers have never closed windows. And this, I didn't go through it, but here's the sort of step by step on just, on just how many do we test it and, and which type of test each day. Um, right up until yesterday, um, where we pulled tested a hundred and twelve students in forty-six staff, so, but you can sort of see the world I'm going through. Who else? Alright, that's all for me for this.
Um, Rhea, I'll go please.
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
This, uh, Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson, that's Ms. Weezen.
Yes.
Chairperson Lansing.
Yes.
And Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Uh, we will move on to subcommittee reports, and the first subcommittee report is Program Subcommittee Meeting of April twenty eighth and May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, with Chairperson Laura Winkins.
Yes, so this may be sort of long, um, so I will start with our meeting of April twenty eighth. Um, so two important things, one which requires, uh, a first reading. So the state has, um, uh, changed their policy around, uh, CBT admissions for vocational technical education. Um, and James and his team have, um, as always, thoughtfully, uh, written a new, uh, policy to uh, cover admission to CBT programs. Um, basically that program has now turned into a lottery system. Um, you know, you wanna join a program, you, if, if there is, you know, are more, uh, people interested in the program than spaces, um, you would be entering a lottery. The one caveat to that is that you must be passing English and math to be, uh, in that lottery, to be concerned. Um, and, um, it's, it's really about removing selective criteria that can inadvertently, um, you know, uh, eliminate certain people from having possibilities or certain opportunities in CBT. It would be almost super, super important. Um, so that's sort of the basics of it, I could talk more of the, the programs and, I mean, the policies and our packet. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions or.
I can, uh, I, I can also help answer questions as well, and then, uh, Principal Cook wasn't here, couldn't be able to be here tonight, but he will be here, uh, what do you guys, the second meeting, so he can also answer questions.
Just one thing I wanna say, it really felt to me from, from Principal Cook, like this is, again, and so many of the things we do, and this is also coming from Desi, it's about equity, it's really about allowing everyone equal opportunity, um, to be in these programs, which have such huge benefits.
Maybe a comment for the folks watching at home is that we do take out of district, uh, students, so it, it, but like the policy is first coming, first, uh, option goes to the locals, but, you know, we do have four programs here, that's now and will do it more in the near future. But if there are any funny people that has connections, Beverly, Essex, anywhere else, who might be interested in coming here, but they don't wanna head up to, uh, Milton's, check us out.
Um, and, and for most of our programs, um, Principal Cook said this is not an issue, the, the main, the main program he mentioned is the most subscribed is Auto, uh, and then Carpentry, so for the most part, um, you know, it may not be necessary to have a lottery, but this is the, this is the protocol if it is necessary.
How, for the ones that are, um, possibly a little oversubscribed, how do they determine who got it and who didn't in previous years, when it wasn't a lottery, you know?
Well, I, my understanding from James, there was, there was criteria, there was, and there were other things involved, uh, discipline, attendance. Those things are all part of your eligibility for these programs, and Ben can say more, but it, it was a more selective, uh, I think guidance counselors would write, um, recommendations, um, it, it was more subjective, so.
And also, just to give those more context, just, this was really, um, Department of Education, uh, really started addressing this because, um, there were some significant issues at regional techs. Okay, they, they, they have a much more, um, I mean, it's all selection there, I mean, it's all, it's all admission, you know, you know, all, all applying, that sort of thing. Um, and so, but, um, and, and at the same time, so that, they, they're, so that, that's the, that's the original intent of the policies, to really address those schools, okay? At the same time, wanted to make sure that, that everyone was operating from a place of, of trying to make sure access, uh, of, of equity is equitable, is, is equitable. Um, so, but that, that's where it came from, because they saw some real challenges, um, across the regional techs. Of course, many, many more kids applying and sort of things, so, but it's important for us to do, do as well.
Um, I have a question on the language where it says a resident of Gloucester Public Schools.
Yes.
Yes, so, um.
Is that their language?
No, that, that is our, um, that is a copy and paste mistake, which, uh, Laura also brought to our attention, and I checked with James, and so we'll have that cleared up. It should say, where it said, when they tell our residents and non-residents, that's Gloucester, Gloucester.
Right.
So we'll, we'll go clean that up for the, for the next screen.
Alright.
Thank you, yeah. But James already made the edits, that was this afternoon.
Yep.
Um, one thing, one thing I wanted to know, um, when we had our meeting, we said that this is a first time, um, policy, that this is not in our manual. However, on our website, under policies, there's a few sort of separately listed policies, not in our policy manual. And there is a CBT policy, not, I think it's just, it may be a description of the admissions process, but just to clarify, if you go under policies, there is, something exists there without a letter, you know, without a, but alphabetical determinant. Um, uh, on the Gloucester Schools website, under policies, so it's not in our policy manual, but it's there.
Okay.
You're saying it's not in the index, but it, but it is in the policy?
No, I'm saying there's a, there's a listing on the website of other policies, there's sort of like policies, um, by, like a few topics.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you see what I mean, and then, and then it will say, and then another heading is policy manual. So if you go to our policy manual, that's our policy manual, but there is a separate thing.
It'll just show me.
Okay, I'll show you.
Yeah, and then, and so, so.
I just wanna clear it up.
Yeah, no, yeah, and, and we do too, obviously, cause, um, yeah, cause that's, uh, so then, and then we'll look at that together, really show me, and then we'll figure out um, whether it's a revision of, of existing policy or if it's. But it doesn't, it won't, it could change the process, but we already have sort of three, we need to change the process. Um, if it's just a revision, um, we'll, we'll fix it.
So is this the policy that regional are recommending to adopt as well?
No, no, so, so there's really two paths you can go down in this process, okay? You can go to, you can stick with a selective, uh, such criteria process, okay? There are many more checks and balances on that, as there need to be, because any selective process can be used, you know, um, you know, either with bias uh, or resulted, even if it's unattended, um, you know, uh, inequity, right? Um, and then another option is, is the lottery option. Um, and so, um, James and his team have been, you know, looking at other policies, consulting other schools as well. Um, a few other things, but that, they, um, they've chosen this option, they think it's the, it's the most way, it's the, it's the best way to ensure uh, equal opportunity, equal access, uh, but then also wanted to make sure that the kids, um, were prepared. And that's why I'm passing math and English, but they have found out that if, say you're a ninth grader or a tenth grader, you're not passing those. In order to make up that work and then pass those classes, those credit, you have to, you know, double up on some acting courses, thereby making it virtually impossible to do the CBT. So that's, that's the reason, you know, we want, that doesn't say it, obviously, you know, um, to make sure you're passing. We want kids to make sure that they're, I think, good at acting and standing in those two subjects in order to do well. Uh, but also in terms of just amount of time, they can't do it, obviously, so.
Think communicating kind of that way, and it's sent to families and whatever way, but those reasons why, because, um, I, I think just having an objective winning the lottery, I think is really good, because then, as you said, everybody has the chance to be chosen, to get in, um.
Well, the last piece on that is just also, um, yes, and if you have a lot of nobody, only people know about.
Right.
Then it still is people, right? But, but James spoke at the program committee about, you know, ways that we will reach out. Um, you know, especially, um, one of the places we wanna make sure we reach out are, are English learner, English learners and their families. And Vanessa Lindberg, who's a nine to twelve, um, families, will, will help, help, sure. Big piece of that.
Uh, last comment by me is I trust that somebody will let us know if there is over demand, to figure out if there's a way to address over demand without having that kids not participating.
So, do you want to say?
So yes, we need to approve them first, well, so first of all, we need to make a motion to waive the actual reading of the policy. So we don't have it in our packet.
So I move that we waive the actual reading of our policy.
Okay. Okay, um, Rhea, can we have roll call vote, please?
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason, yeah. Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Morden.
Yes.
That's it. Uh and then we move to approve.
Move that we approve the first reading of the CBTU, uh revision on the policy for CBTU admissions policy.
Sure.
Stephen? Actually, we have a vote, please.
Mr. Minia.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Morden.
Yes.
So the next thing from that meeting, which doesn't require action, but was also um important, uh was about the O'Malley Innovation Status. Um and you know, basically, um uh things to understand um about, so this innovation program is basically, doesn't really exist anymore, uh is what we learned. There's no money attached, there's no oversight. Um we don't really have any clarity on whether the Gloucester renewal was ever sent or accepted five years ago. Um and then basically, Principal Bailey came in, it's this, this um this uh designation is no longer really adding value to O'Malley. There are pro- there are um uh recommendations in that program that are sort of duplicate what's already happening, with the Sustainable Improvement Plan. Um and those things that are significant for O'Malley are underway. It doesn't halt anything, it doesn't really change anything as far as as far as I could ascertain. Um and um so this is really just to say that uh this would be the time, I guess, that another uh renewal would go in. There's not really even a department anymore, does it?
Because one person.
Right.
It's kind of a very small fraction of of his time.
Right. Right, so this program seems to have sort of um dissolved, for all intents and purposes, from a state perspective. So this is just to say that we are um we acknowledge that, and we are no longer going to send in a renewal. And.
And we're essentially notifying the committee of that.
Yeah.
Uh Principal Bailey has has worked with the team uh to let let them know, I just always had discussions with the leadership team, I think also the fact about, you know, if, what what do we wanna keep going and what will we miss? The one piece on this was, there was a building leadership team created through the um through the innovation plan. And uh and then there's instructional team, uh those emerged this past year, uh but they want, it's more the the staff versus voices was split apart. They have two teams, one's focused on instructional work, one's focused on operations, essentially, that'll happen. And the other piece is in it, that you know, the STEM work, which is in the STEM lab, which is, you know, really fantastic work, has become more and more integrated into the science at O'Malley. Um uh that that will continue, there's no change in that, it continues to grow and strengthen. We have some plans to work with GF on strengthening further. Uh and then there's, and then, but the, yeah, so those are some things that still exist, and there are no reason to change them. Uh but the the actual, I think that, working with DESI and having any involvement on that in terms of a named program that is essentially more of one. Or the more of one was was Laura's word, which I thought was very good. I would say fizzled out, it's another word, it's my word. Um but um there is a value of that, we're involved with the standard improvement process with the state, um which is, we have an accountability process and and it's a forward, that's, you know, the support we're getting from them, and that which isn't grand, is more than we ever got through the innovation process, so. Just sort of letting you know, I said, but it just, it does, it does, no sense to.
One point just to make, um that Lynn brought up as well, is we don't, um so it turns out the name was never officially changed with the state. But we can continue to call it O'Malley Innovation Middle School. Um there's, we can still call it, I mean, she said, uh you know, innovation is great, right? We wanna be innovative, so we can still, we don't have to change sign, you know, change names, it's just to remove it from this program.
I would throw it out there. Yeah, I I would, I would like to entertain the idea of not presenting us as something we're we're not, I would get involved with. The term innovation meant something at one point, but it doesn't really signify like we're in then that program. I know the components of it are are sort of, you know, sustainable group, right? But I I just, I don't, I'm I'm not entirely comfortable with like continuing this, let me just say facade, because it's on the facade.
It's not even, I was there today, it's not, it's an O'Malley Middle School.
Oh, sorry. Okay. But uh I mean, I don't know why we would continue to use that term. We're all acknowledging that it's not in fact what we, you know, are part of.
I think we, I mean, a couple of, a couple of discussions.
I know Lynn has talked, uh if they wanna talk before we.
I I don't see the the big deal to, we could sort of phase it out.
Right.
We don't need to take it out. We no longer have, let's take a vote, we no longer need that, so face it out. I mean, that would be like actions we take away.
Right. Right, but I think you're talking about the name of the school, is that what you're?
Well, it just, it's a reference to that. I mean, like, do we, I mean, we're not gonna be using it, but it's, where where does this still like live? I don't even know. Like you say, it wasn't officially changed with the state, is that right?
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean.
But.
I thought we're doing innovative things there.
Sure.
So, yeah, I get.
It's just.
Ralph Lee O'Malley Innovation School, is that?
That's what it, it's been being called. That's what it's been, but.
Right. A lot of people just call it O'Malley.
What's one called O'Malley?
I think it's like just a solid.
The only only place it is of of any, I mean, no, I I shouldn't, the place I'm aware of it is the sign on Washington Street. I mean, there may be others, I that's, I'm I'm speaking like as if, you know, I know all of these words referred to that way, but I'm not sure there's actually a letter in it anymore.
I mean, the web, I just want on the website, like it, it says like, O'Malley Innovation, so like, there's just like IT could make those changes if necessary, but other than that, doesn't say it on the front of the building. So we're not, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
Given that when the school was was approved as an innovation model, the name was changed. The fact that it did not officially change at state level was probably in a mistake, that it did not get officially changed. So um I also know from a philosophical perspective and approach to learning, um you know, Lynn's talked a lot about innovative practices, and I think we need to really encourage that, and by kind of taking it away, we, kids walk around town with their own O'Malley Innovation Middle School shirts, and they look pretty cool, because no other middle school is called Innovation School. Um so to me, the practice and the goal of always being innovative still is very relevant in my.
Uh I, like Keith, I had to kind of get over the hurdle of, wow, is it really, you know, I mean, uh to me, it seems like we're just using the word innovation in a different context now. And and I'm fine with that, I don't, but like Keith said, I think initially I was like, nah, it just seems kind of messy to me, why don't we just dump it, but using the word innovation in a different context as a just, as an adjective to describe the school, I'm I'm woke up. On, so, but again, like, like I said, like initially, I was kind of like, I don't know, so. You're not alone in it, Keith, I just think that if I use it, if I put it in the context of innovation, thinking outside the box, I'm totally fine with that, yeah.
I mean, I felt that was what Lynn, I mean, just to say, like, I felt that was what Lynn was saying.
Yeah.
We, we wanna continue to innovate and have that be part of our identity, and people, some people are very attached to that name, but it's also just like, you know, this school does have this innovative science program, this school does, is doing innovative things. Um regardless, I mean, this program really doesn't even exist, so it's, if it's, if it, if it helps inspire people, like, I I I think that's the goal from my perspective, and that's what I got from Lynn, which was, we, that's who we are innovating, we're gonna continue to innovate, we want people to be proud of that. Um and so that's what I heard from her, um and I would follow, from my perspective, I would follow her lead on this.
And I'd say to your point, if we change it, it's sort of like admitting, we no longer innovate.
Right.
Right.
So. And I think it's, it's just semantics, but uh it it shows that we are fully behind the concept of innovation.
Right.
And I'm not regu- I'm not regularly changing, so.
Yeah.
It's both a.
Okay, so and we, we don't need any of this, we're just informed, so there's no action yet. Okay, moving on to a bigger one, um so this is also the first reading of our new attendance policy. Um which was included in uh in our packet. Um so, you know, a couple of highlights, and I gave a big explanation of this a few weeks ago. Um attendance worked to a real data guide on our schools and absenteeism. And um I have my colleague, uh Bill here, did the math. You know, as they say in the preamble here, we had thirty one percent of our high school students chronically absent before the pandemic, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Inspired me, cuz he did the math. That's of eight hundred and thirty students, that's two hundred fifty seven students times eighteen days, which is four thousand six hundred and thirty one days of school miss. That year. Um.
Pre-pandemic.
Pre-pandemic. So clearly, there's a problem. And um you know, as they pointed out throughout, and as as Dennis said, you, if you're not in the seat, no matter what we're doing with curriculum and social emotional learning, you're not, you can't learn. Or you're gonna have a much harder time learning. And so this um impetus to move, and Greg, you know, we've been working on this since before the pandemic, when I first got to the committee, was one of the first things that we said, we said. Um and here we are with the new policy. Um I would say the shift in mindset is really significant, um because it's shifting, following DESI recommendations, which are not requirements, but recommendations, it's a much more um student engagement focused model and less punitive model. Um and uh you know, there's all these ways in which, if you go through this, I mean, it's a lot of district support teams, it's sort of what um Principal Ju had talked about, are really looking at you know, why kids aren't coming to school, who's not coming to school, and how we kind of do outreach and engagement. Bring those um bring those students back into school and not push them out. The attendance works, folks talked about increasing the pull and not the push. Um um one reason I asked the question about to Emma and Jordan is when we looked at the numbers of our moderate and severely at-risk students. Um the highest number was in the tenth grade, followed by twelfth, and then followed by kindergarten. So we have a real issue even with younger grades um at sort of getting kids to school consistently and getting those messages through and creating an environment that they wanna be in. So um so this is our first reading of this policy. Um um you know, there's a lot of things in here, there's um the definition of chronic absence as a really significant term, which is getting away from excused and unexcused absences. We're talking about, you know, what, whenever, when you're not there for any reason, and what the sort of bad on effects are. And how we move, you know, how we sort of, again, move towards a multi-tiered system of supports to bring kids back into school. Um and as I, you know, as you have seen on this policy, there's a, you know, four-tier system um um which continues to engage families and caregivers. Um and also focuses much more on a personalized um approach to how we begin with, from the first day a child is absent or student is absent, onto when we're getting into seven, ten absences and more. Um another major piece of this policy is that we are um we are ending the attendance failure policy at the high school. Um which um I learned about through this, um which meant that if you had a certain number of absences, you could, regardless of the work you were doing in a class, you would fail that class, obviously correct. Um so um so for the most part, and and Greg really clarified, there are a few, there are some kids for whom that's a, that's a motivation. But for most kids, that hasn't worked. Um so um James uh was very much behind this. Um and again, we're looking at how we can pull kids in and not push them away. Uh one last thing that I wanted to just highlight that I thought was really significant was um the exit interview before someone drops out. Um instead of just sort of letting a student leave, engaging them, bringing them in for an interview, seeing if there's other programs, we have so many amazing programs. Seeing if there's another way to bring them back in, um and not just, I I don't think anyone at the high school just lets them go, but just to have another point of contact. Um which felt very, very significant to me. Um so that's a brief overview of a lot of work we've listened to and heard about. And uh moving to questions, we have experts here, please.
You're on it, so, and I've been following it, um so I have been kind of, you know, watching the presentations and the, you know, the research and the consultant's perspective, I think it's definitely uh the way our policy should be. I mean, that was always, the intent of our policy is that we want kids in school, we want them to be with their friends, we want them to be in the classroom. Um but our policy didn't necessarily highlight all those positive reasons why we wanted them there. So switching this and having these supports, I think is really important.
I do have a question, uh it's sort of this one that the Program Subcommittee. Students were given the option, parents were given the option to have their their kids uh attend remotely, right? Um because of, Jordan, is that not, I mean, I remember at the beginning of the uh, there was a question here, it went out.
Not this year.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
You know, last year.
But that's no longer.
You know, it's not, it's not uh remote learning time, there's, it's not considered uh, you know, in-school learning time by the department.
Yeah, I thought there was language in here that that allowed for.
Oh, in the policy?
Yeah, in this, right, so that's why I was really, like, uh, it's.
Yeah, there's definitions of absence, you know, and presence, which is very clear.
Like in-person uh as as well as online distance learning would be present. So that's why I was asking about whether there's still students, like, can you just take us to where, oh, it's uh key terms, um age. Present. Happy day, kind of gets present, receiving academic.
Research and tests.
We did remove, uh policy originally had um had some language about remote learning, and we did remove all of uh that, but there are cases, and that would be uh when there's medical need, medical approval.
Right.
Where that may be necessary, which that's a very small, very small number of cases, but we do wanna keep those um in play. But you're absolutely right, the uh you you may even have seen uh a much earlier draft where there was an entire section that referred to the kind of online learning we did two years ago. So we removed that, but we we did retain that for those few cases that are medically required, yeah.
Um I do feel like this is the right direction um for the district. My only concern is implementing this before we have the staff and the support to fully implement. So I don't wanna prematurely put this out there and not have the staff to fully follow this through. So I guess, sort of from your perspective, what um what do you, what do we, what do we need to implement this well?
I'll, I'll join in.
Yeah, I I think what's, so yes, and um what's important is that this will happen over time. You know, and we'll start with the attendance team, because those are, you know, our established staff, that sort of thing. Um we have an opportunity to overhaul the, what's been known as a district attendance officer, that can play a role, it's much more about uh much more aligned with this, this approach, okay? Something that changed, we wanted to do, and now we're going to. Um so we'll have some of the pieces in place. The other, other part of this is not only staff here, but um um it was working through some of the operational pieces, whether it's at the high school and um attendance failure, so there's, there's quite a lot of operational work to be, to 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 be done, and as we do the operating work, we give an example. They say, uh at O'Malley, you know, just using that as an example, the attendance team there will continue to dig in the data, and they may learn that hmm what would be really helpful is a person doing this sort of work, or they may, you know, you know, building on something that's in the policy. Um we need to change this practice, and that means our teachers need to change this practice, okay? So how do then we support them over time to develop that, how to build to do that, so. Those pieces of what it's gonna take to implement, I don't think are. So those pieces of what it's gonna take to implement, I don't think are crystal clear yet. Um, it's gonna take some time to to work on that, um, and develop that. Some of the places, some of the pieces to begin, um, like for example, um, as you know, in in Esser, we have um, some dollars for communication and outreach.
Yeah.
So, you know, what, bring on some work, some capacity, communication, outreach, that's a place that they will build capacity for this as well, you know?
Yeah.
So, it's not, I don't, I guess what I'm trying to say is those, there's still a quite a bit of TBD on what we need and how to carry it out. The place to begin, I think I'm right, this Greg, is the attendance teams and communication and then especially at the, um, and then also sort of real defined outreach and creation of youngest grades as well, you know, sort of there, so.
And so are we imagining that we're gonna implement this policy as a whole? Or are we gonna piece it out and take it step by step?
I think, I think, I mean, I think it's multiple steps over many years, you know? What I mean, yeah, multiple steps, you know, to get it fully operational, fully in the culture, fully in how we operate. It's gonna be like, you know, how we do things.
Yeah.
It'll take a while, yeah, definitely.
Good thing is that we're ahead of the curve for other, other school districts, like like she was, like the presentations were saying that we're like getting ahead of the ball here because of the changes in this.
Yeah, yeah. I think she said, I don't, this surprised me with the, she thinks we're the first, they get this wrong, the first district in the Commonwealth to make this sort of shift in our policy, did I hear that wrong?
She, she um, thinks that maybe the case, for sure, but most likely.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah.
Um, if I could just add on the, on the phasing, it's, that's, it's a, it's a great question. We wrestled with how many concrete benchmarks and changes to put in. And so when we talk about removing what we have and putting something in place, um, one, there are a couple of key things here. One is a, is a, a lot of this is a mindset shift. Um, which doesn't cost money, but it takes focus and discussion and keeping on, on the front, front burner. Um, the tenants' failure piece at the high school, we can, we will be looking back even further. But the data is already has shown us going back a number of years, that it, it does not seem to have been working. So when we talk about taking something away and replacing, though there certainly is funding that we can and and should bring to bear on what is outlined in this policy. In that case, we'd be taking something away that is probably detrimental.
Yeah.
So it's okay to remove that one. Changing the definition is not something that costs us any money. They excuse unexcused, that clears up some confusion, puts our focus where it needs to be. The one, one of the pieces that has uh, money attached to it are the um, school, the school and uh, district and uh, tenants' teams. And we have the funding uh, already laid out in Esser for the next couple of years. We have um, additional funding that will most likely come to bear with a Title IV grant, which can support attendance uh, um, efforts. And that's about forty thousand dollars that I, I believe we can devote almost all of that to attendance and that we should devote most of that to attendance, especially in the first couple of years that puts a more heavy lift. Um, we have the tenant supervisor position to refocus. And so these are pieces that are all within our, you know, our, our financial abilities. Um, and then, uh, as Ben said, there may be things that uh, schools identify as, as further needs. So I think, I think we can meet, uh, one of the provisions was requiring uh, teams to meet monthly at a minimum uh, every two weeks if there's fifteen percent or higher chronic absenteeism, we can meet that, uh, that requirement. Um, as far as messaging, the, the requirements for messaging, we can meet that with what we have with Kimvo, the um, uh, product that allows us to do uh, more personalized messaging in multiple languages. We would like to be able to do even more personalized with people making calls. And that's a piece that, you know, we'll need to talk about, uh, where, where we can find that funding. Uh, that's something that, you know, it's not specifically required, it's a recommendation, but um, I think we can also find the funding, Title IV grant will probably help us out with that as well.
Yeah.
So I think it's, I think this is within uh, within our reach right now and.
Yeah, that was specifically when that that personalized outreach piece feels like it's the most important piece of this. And so how, and so I was thinking about it more, not as, not in financial terms, but in time of people who are already in the building who has the time to really.
And that's a great point, and I do think we're gonna have to supplement with additional funds that I, I feel we have well within our reach in the short term. In the longer term, we already know that teachers spend an enormous amount of time catching kids up or responding to the existing absenteeism. Every time a teacher has to help a student make up work, every time a teacher has to bring a student up to speed on something they missed. Ever, that, and every time that there is a uh, phone call home around grades that may be suffering because of attendance, that's all draining teachers of a lot of time as a, as a response to that. If we can get shift to being more proactive and having kids here, we're gonna be able to devote less time to, you know, catching them up continuously. The impact on a, on a single classroom from three or four kids being out totally impacts what I intend to do for that lesson for that day too. So now I have to re, readjust what I was going to teach. And if we can remove those kinds of uh, interruptions to learning, I, I think there will be more time for doing those kinds of positive proactive calls.
Uh, the last thing, that will be that personal, personal outreach will be the most difficult after both plates. So I, and Greg can say it different, but, but, but um, partially because of what does it, because as you said, guys will do a lot of things already. You know, so how do we shift practices, taking off of those plates? Or how do we create a, 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 a system or process where we can, not, not a simple thing to do, but, but we do really believe like that, that's fully here, so, but that's what we have to figure out.
And, and one last thing on the operational pieces, there are components that the uh, pre-K through eight and nine through twelve need to work on this summer. And so hopefully by the end of week, there'll be a posting going out for those teams to work this summer to identify the finer details of how that will look at the different levels. Those contain some things that are in our current policy and we may bring those forward as addenda to this policy. And uh, our goal is to have those ready before school starts.
I just wanna ask a question that came, um, just for a, sort of a more, that's a bold question. Um, Melissa had responded to say that she wasn't sure why we haven't, or what we're removing in this policy.
So I'm just gonna start addressing, so um, so first question is, this is totally replacing what we currently have. So usually when we amend a policy, we do the black line version, it makes people understand. But so if this is so comprehensive, it makes sense to not do that. And then the second thing is Melissa's point, which is this has a lot of um, background stuff in it as to why we're doing it. And I don't think that should be in the policy, that is part of why we're doing it, but it's not to be, parent who's reading it does not need to know the history as to why this is in policy.
Yeah, um, I agree.
And my last point before you think about that is um, policy should have policy versus the procedure. So just a good look to see where, where the pieces are, right?
So, uh, a few things, one, um, if, if it's helpful between now and the next time we meet, I can have a, uh, though it won't be the black line, there'll be comparison of points, key points if you'd like. Um, I could do that between current policy and.
I could do that.
I don't think it's.
Okay, uh, secondly, uh.
But that said, I do recommend people make sure they review our current policy so they're, they're understanding what it has and if there's things they
Yeah.
still seeing as that they like, that's part of the schedule.
Secondly, uh, if I understand you correctly, the background pieces, I, I think specifically what our policy was, so the lines that say, uh, the prior policy was punitive in this area and should be, those would be the kinds of things. Um, maybe some clarification on other background things. I, I do think there's a place for um, why a, a policy is, is important and setting that through bigger picture. But I think what you're referring to is specifically those that refer to our prior policies. Easy, again, we can remove those. Uh, the other thing that should happen, uh, though, um, Tenants Works does this across the country, they did review all of our mass general law and DESI requirements. I'll make sure it goes to our legal
Yeah.
uh, to have it double checked.
Okay, so same first, uh, to say that, to, to, uh, agree with what you've outlined?
No, because we really are amending the policy.
Okay.
As opposed to, well, yeah, as opposed to kind of the first reading and then a second reading of the policy, this is not that. So I think we will continue to suggest that item to the next meeting. Uh, of which some of those certifications or whatever get incorporated and we'll look to see what that says.
So we don't need that.
No, I don't need that. Right, agree in, okay?
Yep.
Yep.
So that's what the program said.
Well, I just wanna comment that I know this has spent a long, long amount of time and effort and um, interrupted by a lot of other things too, but it's certainly been focused and, and I'm really glad we're here. Okay? Uh, okay. Your done with your report?
I'm.
Okay, so next, so my report is Special Building and Finance Subcommittee Meeting on May fourth, two thousand twenty-two. It was um, uh, one agenda, one agenda item, Melissa is not here, she's wait, so I'll do the report, which is it was a one item agenda of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget development and recommendations um, of the budget to be submitted to the mayor. And um, so pretend that we'll take us through some of those key things um, that are, I'm gonna change some of the questions.
Okay, so um, just like we do every year, there are adjustments that, that we make in the, in the budget as the picture becomes clearer. Uh, as we move from, in our initial meetings in, um, actually, I'll plug up here. Looking at our presentation, one second. Are you looking at our presentation? So uh, as the budget development process goes through across many months from our initial meetings with the district leadership, uh, principals and department heads in November and December to our presentations at the B and F Subcommittee on our priorities in January, uh, through various presentations, the full committee and the community, um, public hearing and now um, tonight, um, a number of things become clearer, healthcare costs become clearer, overtraining of college become clearer, issue, uh, um, uh, special education needs become clearer, um, the uh, the state budget becomes clearer bit by bit. Um, we make adjustments, it's a lot of highlight those adjustments, changes tonight, um, that we made. Um, because uh, you know, along, along the process. Um, so, but the, the headline of, of tonight is that these numbers don't change. We'll show you how we've uh, sort of prioritizing through areas that I've mentioned to you before that we're in process. Um, and we sort of finalize those in the operating budget. Um, but that doesn't change essentially the bottom line here, which is a two point nine six percent increase. Um, uh, in terms of our budget, one point three five million dollars. That's as we've just shown, I'll show again, is, is in line with the last five plus years of um, of the school's budget across the city. Um, and uh, you know, the team should try to be, so another piece on that, it's one of mine, folks, that we showed you tonight is the COVID challenges and the budget, and the budget impact of them continue, okay? So the first and foremost, it continues to sort of put on, put uncertainty into what we will be doing or maybe it may need to do next school year. Um, it also though is requiring as, as um, the, how many school principals tonight talked about um, ongoing efforts to support students, there might be interventions, there might be summer programs, there might be tutoring, uh, special education compensatory services, um, needs for digital behavioral support, um, uh, mental health support. Um, and uh, and also sort of social, social learning skills, as we talked about with kids of just needing, you know, more time, uh, in, you know, learning how to work in groups, learning how to work together, so. Um, and then also there, there may be further adjustments in um, our special education placements as team processes continue to spring. Um, I think that won't change the budget, um, but may um, have an impact on the contingency that you have to pay in the budget for special education costs, so. Want to um, uh, talk about a few things. Um, one, our addition to school choice. Um, in each of the past years, two thousand seventeen, actually, every year, um, those students who elect to go to school, gotham residents elect to go to school outside of, of Gloucester, um, they can choose to do so, uh, they go to local communities. Um, some are very small, smaller of those students, um, needs for the education services where they're placed out, out of that district, okay? Um, since two thousand seventeen, uh, in order to cover those costs, the school department has done a special budgetary transfer to the city, sorry, in two thousand seventeen. Um, they're working with, with the city on that this year. Um, we, uh, there's no statement that requires that transfer, um, that's part of the local aid that's provided to the city. Um, we've um, worked through to allow that, that to um, uh, not happen next year. Forgo that, that, that additional, uh, the payment to the, to the city from the school's operating budget. Um, that allows a budget reduction, cost reduction for us of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. It's the amount we had planned to um, um, intended to, uh, we're, we're budgeting for, sorry, to make that uh, transfer to the, to the city. Um, because we don't need, we won't be doing it next year, it allows us flexibility in our budget. Um, in some really important areas that we've been talking about, um, and I'll, which I'll describe down. So these are changes in our budget that don't affect the bottom line, don't affect the bottom line, but do, um, will. Um, we don't have, have a positive effect on, especially the high school and middle school, so. At O'Malley, um, we really wanna focus on, um, as we described, um, you know, continuing, starting, continuing the work um, that we've been doing, a curriculum review, instructional uh, improvements, uh, data teams and really knowing how each individual student's doing, both academically and socially, socially emotionally. Um, and one of the way, one of, one of the uh, ways to, to, to begin that is get smaller classes, especially in our academic, academic classes. Um, uh, another thing we wanna do is have more physical activity and more specials for students at O'Malley. Um, in order to do that, um, we're gonna be adding, in order to do both of those things, we're gonna be adding three special teachers. Uh, we budgeted to add three special teachers at O'Malley uh, for next year. Uh, that's what it gives you both, allows us to do both of those. Change the schedule in a way that creates more time for students um, to do um, physical education and music and also create a schedule that allows for smaller um, uh, academic class sizes by spreading the class size, the, 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 the classes across more sections, so. Um, so you, if you have, if you have a total of um, uh, say a hundred and twenty students and you have, no, that's not right. Um, I say a hundred students and you're teaching four classes, you have the twenty-five in class, if you're teaching five classes, then you've got twenty students in class. And that, that shift in five or so students per class, especially when you're getting into the lower twenties in middle school, makes, makes a big difference. On academic learning, on. Academic learning, on connection between the teacher and the students, that always positively, both those things. More engagement and close relationships with teachers, always relates in better classroom culture of the eight years or something, so. That's really what we're going towards, one of the steps of work that O'Malley will keep doing. At Gloucester High School, a couple of things, again, these will sound familiar. We've talked to you about the influx and then, sorry, the growing over the English learners in our school system, which is a great benefit to our community and our schools. And also really requires to make sure that we have the staff and the approach to support those students in becoming full members of a school community and also really making progress in English language skills. Adding an English language educator at the high school will allow us to shift how we're supporting, improve, rather, I should say, how we're important, improved, sorry. Shift how we're supporting and teaching our English learners, especially newcomers. And also lessen the need to do something we had to do quite a bit this year, which was have teachers teach a sixth class in order to support our, to grow the number of English learners, okay? Those are in children's English immersion classes, are academic content classes, not just language classes. Where we need additional sections of those classes to make sure our English learners have, you know, the full complement of classes, basically. So lessen, lessen the need for that. And then hiring new guidance counselors, this is what I call three for one. Cause I have three benefits, benefits actually that are on a variety of levels. We're gonna move towards having four counselors, we're full student load. Right now, we have three counselors and then a coordinator for school counseling who has a partial student load. By spreading our, you know, 200, if you think of our 800 plus students in the high school across four counselors, each counselor will have approximately 200 students as a caseload. While that seems like a lot, it's actually very low and it's actually aligned with the recommendations of the School Counseling Association on what student load should be at a high school. It also puts us in line, if not ahead of many other districts in the Commonwealth. Shifting the responsibilities of school counseling coordinator to lead this counseling department still allows us to, and then also taking on more of an operations role, allows us to continue to expand the leadership at the, at the high school into more of a full team. Where they're working together to do all the different pieces, operational logistics, instructional improvement, program review, evaluation, supervision, progressive development, planning, budgeting across multiple people as opposed to having too much, just depending on one person, the principal. And so this, this combined position will allow to take off, to have this person focus on operations. That could be like this year when they're having the entryway to be done, okay? That was all on the principal's shoulders. The budget process is primarily on the principal's shoulders right now, he works with the program leaders, obviously. And what that does by taking off, by expanding the leadership and taking on, having a person take on those roles. We allow Principal James Cook to do what he is incredibly well skilled at, which is instructional support. And working with program leaders to really continue the work he's been doing, continue the work his team has been doing to really strengthen instruction, deepen student engagement, to even able to continue. So, but it allows him to really take, to focus his efforts and then limited time, and limited time, he's a human, he's got limited time, okay? Onto, you know, more square of those areas. You heard a number of different folks come in front of you, talk about the groundwork he's doing and can we provide support to him? So he isn't burning the candle at every single end. Really, it's of course about Principal Cook, but it's also about anybody who's in a position going forward, how to make it sustainable for them. And therefore help them be effective as we do the building. Particularly in this area of the structural support and professional development, I'm trying to think curriculum. We really want to end of bill focus on that. The last piece is English learner education contingency. This will be about a $40,000 contingency. A smaller one, and you're not something as significant as the special education, you know, easy to be, but it gives us facility during the year in case we get additional newcomers or increases of needs in translation or perhaps staff. Maybe second just experience, but we can use that across schools, basically. You may look, yeah, so that's, then the last piece is just some initial supplies, salary adjustments based on the bargaining impact, site maintenance, that sort of thing that we're including as well. Let me pause there. I will show you. I'll show you the numbers in a moment, let me see if there are any questions, just in terms of those are the changes in the budget that you see in the SFR document.
I just need some clarification on the lessen the need to pay 20% of the teacher salaries. I'm not following that sentence, sorry.
Yeah, so right now, because, and this is related to more students coming in than we, than we ever could have planned for. So as there's been an increase during the school year, after being a school year, English learners, their, in their children immersion, children English immersion academic classes, where you have a teacher who's trained to work, you know, with English learners in the content area. As we had more students come in to enroll in a full schedule, we didn't have the staff members to teach us classes. So in across all, you know, major content areas, we asked teachers in high school to take on a sixth period teaching. So they teach five periods, it's a regular full time load. We have to ask them to take on sixth period. By the contract, if they take on sixth period, they have an additional 20% of their salary that they get as a sign that for that extra work, extra planning, extra students, that sort of thing. By, I added English language educator, educator, you know, helps us, helps James and Mark off and schedule in a way that that becomes less likely to have to do that. If you ask me how that happens, that's when we'll stop. I understand, yeah. The ins and outs of that, that complex work, but that's, yeah. And that's, again, that's, that's, whenever we ask a high school teacher to take on that sixth class, well, for whatever reason, you know, a whole variety of reasons. That's what's, that's what's called for in the contract. In this case, it happened to be a number of staff members focused, so we gotta make sure we can support it and we plan.
And when we talk about newcomers who are coming in, that could happen during, during the school year.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, any kind, right, and just like any student, you know, can come in, you know, whenever they show up and they're a community. We enroll them all to schools, you know, no matter what day it is. And this is specifically, uh, they were just, and it's actually, as we talked about before, students who are enrolling in our public schools in many, many places, that's the level of folks who are coming, you know, new to the country and also new to the country and don't have many English language skills is, is growing in ways that many folks, it's not just a, as an in Gloucester, it's in as I said, you know, these are families, you know, who, I mean, and of course, immigrants have been coming to Gloucester forever, right? You know, I mean, this is not new in Gloucester, right? But whether folks, those families came here, you know, three generations ago, or they're coming, you know, this week. They add a tremendous amount of strength to our community, you know, where the community is founded, and so many of these families come from afar and and I have some great respect for them, for those families facing that challenge, often under difficult circumstances and persistence and bravery takes. And we always wanna make sure that our community recognizes that, our schools recognize that, and then also benefit from that. Just keep going here, so a couple of things. The state is considering Chapter 70 local aid increases. That's happening because there was a change in the Chapter 70 local aid formula. After many years of advocacy from many, many folks in the school committees, the Chapter 70 state education aid formula adjusted to to really reflect the, better reflect, they say, the cost of educating students by needs. And that includes disabilities and learners, economically disadvantaged students. It just so happens that over the number, last number of years, Gloucester has had increases in groups of students which are considered high needs. So that overall increase in student enrollment last year this year means that if the Chapter 70 state education aid increases that were proposed first by the governor and then by the House and approved by the House in their budget, and now just recently, as of yesterday, also proposed in the Senate. If those come through, then Gloucester will benefit from an increase in our state education aid to the city. So, but that's tied to the fact that our, the cost of educating our students are increasing as well, okay? And then other piece that they're considering is that, cause inflation is impacting budgets at this point pretty significantly, is how do we address that? Another area we talked to you about, not necessarily related to the Chapter 70 locally increase, but perhaps increases or we hope increase in chapters, in the circuit breaker or added district tuition costs and those tuition costs, the added tuition also significant costs relating to students who are in districts as well, especially. So what that means that the state is working through potential increases in Chapter 70. We're working with the city, we're really focusing at this first stage because not making that special budgetary transfer. Operating budget, our operating budget is benefiting from that. But we wanna work with the city in future years, both in operating budget, but particularly utilizing Chapter 70 dollars of capital. We shared with you, I think at our last meeting, significant needs you have across all, not all of our buildings, but many of our buildings, especially O'Malley and the high school. And so some of those dollars, if they come through from the state, can be planned year after year on supporting their capital work. So that's all to be TBD and will be important, it happens over multiple years. We also wanna make sure that, that those dollars are coming every year rather than a one time piece, and that's, that's
Okay, all right. Just, just two things related to the Chapter 70 change. So, I mean, that's huge. And are they then moving away from the sort of real estate, you know, they, they were property value, I mean, it was related to property values in the past?
Yeah, it's, I don't know enough, maybe, so there's two sides, there is the what a community can, 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 I don't wanna say pay, but contribute, okay? And then there's the cost of what it takes to educate those, that creates children, okay? The major changes I believe in the formula were on figuring out what it costs to educate, educate that creates children, okay? Which means that, and then trying to match this, you know, with that, okay, across the state. And this year is the first year that they're making significant moves on the second part of it, it is the funding part of it, okay?
Huge deal. And so related to that, do you need, I mean, should we as a school committee be, do we advocacy work? Should we be, do we need to be?
We're gonna talk about advocacy piece in a little bit. I think, I think, I think all the players, the governor, the House, the Senate are all aligned. There may be some differences in exact balance, okay, but I think that's, you know, like counting any tickets on the hash. I think actually a more important place is where you've chosen to advocate about the free lunch, you know, the free meals program. That, I'll talk about it later, but is not in the House, in the Senate, sorry, not in the Senate as of yesterday. So, but that, if you wanna advocate, that's a good place to advocate. The advocacy has happened really over the last year, year and a half, and now the funding. Questions, I'll keep moving to show you the numbers, so this is what the dollars amount to. Because we have the reductions in the special education costs, which is that transfer, it allows us to fund what I described to you with those dollar amounts, that is no change in the bottom line, okay? But we are able to really support some really high priorities, specifically at O'Malley and the middle school. I mean, O'Malley is the middle school, O'Malley and the high school. And then what you see here is a dollar amount changes from the proposed budget as we've been using, you know, as we've been working through. So you have this current FY22 budget and in the column second from the left, in the column third from the left is the proposed budget that you've seen and and then response to input from all of you as well as changing the dynamics as I just described. You see the difference sort of school by school, as you see here, as I just described, the most significant differences in GHS and O'Malley. Gets us back to the original.
Any further questions? So I will a promotion that came out of BNF, which is, first one is to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget as amended for line item changes with no change to the total budget of $46,988,977. I said it exactly as it's on our agenda. To approve the fiscal year 2023 budget as amended for line item changes with no change to the total budget of $46,988,897. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think traditionally mayors have voted present on these types of votes.
Well, you're always welcome to vote in the affirmative.
I intend to vote yes, I mean, it's the Chapter 70 is a huge thing. It goes back more than 20 years, 20 years ago, I started the school committee. We were complaining about, to large point, they were basing it on property value, say the back shore, shore road, that skewed the number. But it seems like finally after 20 plus years, they've gotten around to it, and indicators from the House, the governor, and now the Senate budget look pretty good. And John Dunn has some level of confidence that this should be the new normal. The roll of the dice for us is we don't know when the actual budget gets signed at the state level. And if it's after January, July 1st, you know, and significant changes, we're all kind of in a pickle. But, you know, this is the number that you guys were advised to work with at the end of last year. And I'm sure we're advised to work with the administration to go over. So it seems silly to vote present. And now we're gonna go and ask the city council and see where they take it. But we feel it's, the stars are aligned for us for now, but who knows with the war raging and with the inflation and what else might hit us, what could happen in the coming years, but I think we're in pretty good shape now. And who knows what will happen as these budgets are actually finalized at the state level, there might be more pennies from heaven. But I think this is a safe number for the school.
Okay, we'll call votes.
Mr. Minion?
Yes.
Mayor Verda?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
Chairperson Glantz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Second motion is that I move that we approve the fiscal year 2023 budget for submission to the mayor. To the mayor, I say and city council, but I think we send it to him and he sends it to the city council, correct? So to the mayor, here you go.
Session?
Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll call votes.
Mr. Minion?
Yes.
Mayor Verda?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
Chairperson Glantz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Can I just extend a couple of thanks, thank yous here? First of all, thank you to Mayor Verda and also John Dunn. And Kenny Cost is also part of the team, a lot of folks in the team there, but just really great partners. Just folks we can sit down with, think through things, understand where they're seeing, how they're seeing, how we're seeing. It's just, it's just, it's a great way to work. And I'm glad we work that way, it's a big help, I think, in schools and city, all of us, so thank you. Thank you to committee members, especially the BNF, you know, Subcommittee for working through this on all the various meetings and sticking with us. But also asking great questions and then really your support in the process. And also thank you to Gary and Cody. I work with Gary very directly and Cody is all the answers and I often, Tony and Gary work together a lot, but don't ever ask Gary, every time I pull him to my office to ask him about this other thing, okay? It's a lot. And then he's getting used to all my questions, I think, and he's getting used to how long I can keep in my office. Budgeting the questions, so, but they're great partners.
Budgeting the questions, so, but, but they're great partners, they really know their stuff, they always give good, clear answers. And they're also really good problem solvers too. So especially these days where we have the operating budget, the state operating budget, we get a lot of different grants and complicated grants, you know, that we've always had from federal state, but also ESER. And they're just great, great, they're a great team, they have great service to our, to our team, the whole team, mid-school and stuff. So just, just appreciate it takes all of us to do this and then to make sure we spend it wisely and so appreciate the support.
Thank you, sir.
It was great work coming out.
Thank you. Kenny, potentially, there's a lot. I have a procedureal question here. So you'll transmit this electronically, I assume, is there going to be like updated pages for the hard copy?
Yeah, you have those in your packet and we'll make sure that all, yeah, those are all, yeah.
I don't know if you typically do nine copies for the counselors, I don't know.
They've, some folks have asked for them.
They've asked for like seven copies, but we can add, if you want nine, we can do that as well.
Yeah, it'd be good to just deliver it to them, you know, but we'll, we'll get it to them in spirit electronically.
Yes, I think some folks did not want a, a paper copy.
Yeah, scope, I have whatever the requests were for that. Just to make sure they have the latest.
Yeah, thank you.
Put me down for a digital copy.
Okay.
All right, also, there was a recommendation coming out of BNF to send a letter of support to the Senate committee on House Ways and Means relating, well, relating to Senate Ways and Means relating to extended, extending free meals for all students. And I so, okay, so this has already been approved in the House, is my understanding, so our letter is going to go to the Senate.
And, and very much important to this point because it is not in the Senate proposal. So the Senate Ways and Means proposal is, is just, in case for folks that don't know, for folks that don't know, is the way the state budget process worked, the House Ways and Means, sorry, the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which is their version of our BNF, okay? They put up for a poll to the full Senate, okay? They did that yesterday, okay? In that, in their budget, they call the Senate Ways and Means budget, they do not have funding for the free meals program, okay? So you, so that could go into the Senate bill when the full Senate debates the Senate budget. It can be added in through amendment, that's what you essentially want them to do at this point. If at that point still not added in, when the House, the House and the Senate will have two different versions of their, of their budgets, they have to reconcile them, they come to agreement, it could also be added back in there. But where you want it to be added back in is with the Senate budget, which is why this is addressed, the leadership of the Senate, work with the U.S.T.R. and Pablo M.A.S.C. Do everything that it can to, because if it goes in the Senate version as well, it's done, it's in the Senate House, it's, it's, it's a done deal, basically. It's not, it's up in the air and that, that will lead us to the CEP process, which isn't, you know, it's okay, manageable as we discussed, but that's good for all of us. Just answering, you go first.
Well, I'm just wondering, is there, I mean, should I write this?
Oh, it's in your packets.
Well, there is the.
Yeah, yeah, it's on your back.
Oh, I didn't see that, great, thank you.
So I, I think this is a worthy exercise because as mentioned to you, you three in the meeting this morning, Senator Todd was in my office yesterday, he mentioned the benefit of the Senate bill last. Just between the time the House budget happened and Senate started doing theirs, there were two, there was two billion dollars of additional revenue that they hadn't anticipated. So the state's flush with doughs and we need to take, take in our share.
For our, for our students of free meals, and we know that, that this helps participation in meals a lot.
I don't even know how we would go about this process, but do we have any families that would be willing to share their experience with getting free meals and why it's been important to them over the last few years? I just feel like, from a school committee perspective, it's impactful, but it, but really it comes down to families sharing why it's important.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, I don't know if we can pull that together, I think it's a great idea.
I don't think we need to share names necessarily, but you know, just.
I'm sure the opener could help with that.
Yeah, votes, something.
Yeah, I'm sure the opener could help with that.
I do know there's a lot of other organizations advocating as well, right, on like that kind of story.
Let me, I think you just go forward with your letter.
Right.
Like, let me check with Martha Jo tomorrow, and she may check with, again, I think the opener might be a helpful partner in this.
Are they advocating, I mean, are they also advocating for this?
I don't know, honestly, I, I mean, I, I, I'm assuming it would be, I still don't know for sure.
Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson, yes. Ms. Weesent, yes. Chairperson Glancen, yes. And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Moving on to discussion and other.
There's on our agenda, there's something, it was added acceptance of DESI FY twenty two one time assistance for districts.
Right.
I had an earlier one.
Looking at earlier, and I, I was pretty earlier. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the DESI FY fiscal year twenty two one time assistance for districts with pandemic-related enrollment disruptions impacting chapter seventy eight in the amount of twenty seven thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars.
Self-explanatory?
Self-explanatory. Do you want to explain it for the? It's money that DESI had, had some extra funds and wanted to provide some impact relief to the districts that had some enrollment growth. That had to do with our, our food service revenue and was making up some money for our food service revenue that we lost because we couldn't serve food. All card food.
Yeah, and it's, it's a formula, you know, tied to chapter seventy locally forwards, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
No more questions, okay.
Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson, yes. Ms. Weesent, yes. Chairperson Glancen, yes. And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Now we can go on to the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial Building Committee update. And I guess the one thing is that there's a meeting Thursday.
Tomorrow. No, I think the latest news you got earlier tonight, Sunday evening, you have, um, on budget. We are looking tomorrow to just consider putting back some, some items, they're not going back now, but just prioritizing those and what we can do now. So we have a list of alternates, a few things we took out that are, mostly, most are aesthetics, aesthetics are important. But we're looking again tomorrow whether or not we can, if, when we can get some back. Tune in tomorrow, I will give you updates next time.
That's our agenda. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second. Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson, yes. Ms. Weesent, yes. Chairperson Glancen, yes. And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Thank you all, thank you, everybody.